Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The July 19, 2006 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., and also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 4:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. We also have an announcement that I make after we open up each of our meetings here, both in the morning as well as the afternoon session. It's been recommended that we state this publicly, although there is no reason to think that we'll ever have to engage in the exercise that's about to be described. The building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using one of the designated exits. Once outside, proceed to the left and assemble on the Las Vegas Boulevard side of the property. Employees wearing safety vests or are city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. Thank you. As I say, there's no reason to believe that anything's going to happen, but we do this in an abundance of caution. Now, before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like everyone to please rise for the invocation given this morning by Dr. Pastor Ann Jones, Life Christian Center, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Good morning. You may bow your heads if you like. We come this morning in prayer with thanksgiving, with confidence for mercy and kindness and goodness. We thank God for this beautiful, wonderful city of Las Vegas and the City Council, and for all the benefits that have been loaded in this day for us. We ask for wisdom, guidance, understanding, and directions, and as the agenda proceeds, let the benefits come forth for the benefits of all that are in Las Vegas, and we thank you this day. Amen.
Amen. My pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Usually we have a big crowd at this time when we do our ceremonial part of the agenda, but I guess all the wealthy Las Vegans are down at the beach or something. Good morning once again. For our first item, we would like to recognize the July Employee of the Month. To assist in making this presentation, I'd like to ask the Administrator of the Senior Citizens Law Project, Sugar Vogel, to come to the podium, and I'm pleased to announce that the July 2006 Employee of the Month is Kristi Beckwith. Give her a round of applause. Kristi's been with the city since 1992 and is a paralegal with the Senior Citizens Law Project. The city of Las Vegas and the Senior Citizens Law Project have both benefited from her strong work ethic. For example, she secured additional funding for the Senior Citizens Law Project through grants from the Nevada Law Foundation, the Pro Bono Foundation, and the Division for Aging Services. She also recently spearheaded the effort to make the Senior Citizens Law Project fully automated, scanning 20,000 closed files. These efforts will lead to a more efficient operation benefiting constituents and the department. Her efforts are also noticed in the community. I was fortunate to be present when she received a very distinguished award from the Clark County Bar Association, which is called the Liberty Bell Award, earlier, I guess about two months ago, right? And she was presented an award as well from the Susan G. Coleman Foundation for leading the largest corporate team at the annual Race for the Cure for the second year in a row. Her hard work and dedication goes beyond the workplace. She's dedicated volunteer coordinating successful efforts for a number of charities. In addition, she's a licensed foster parent of two brothers for more than a year now. So, she's a great lady. On behalf of myself and the entire City Council, I'd like to congratulate you for this honor. Great seeing you again. Sugar.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. I just wanted to inform you that when Kristi began with the city of Las Vegas 14 years ago, when I hired her, she began as a legal secretary, and the city has a wonderful tuition reimbursement program, and Kristi studied to be a certified paralegal and was promoted. And on behalf of the Department of Leisure Services and the Senior Law Project, we congratulate her for going beyond the call of duty. When we have a senior at the law project that needs a will signed and is at hospice and time is of the essence, Kristi will go out there and pitch in. She'll go the extra mile. If we have a senior in a nursing home, it's Kristi that goes and visits the senior. She has extensive community efforts, Domestic Violence Task Force, Race for the Cure, and we are just very proud of the city of Las Vegas, the department, the Senior Law Project to congratulate her on this well-deserved award.
Thanks. That was really nice to hear the mayor and Sugar talk about these accomplishments. I'm very proud of them. I enjoy what I do. I love working for the city of Las Vegas. I tell people, I tell my clients, you know, they come in to prepare their will, okay? They're healthy clients, they're 65 years old, and I say, "When the day comes," you know, 25, 30 years from now, and you die, "Have your daughter or son call me, I'll be here." I fully intend on being here. I love my job, I'm not going anywhere. Like Sugar said, I started as legal secretary for the Senior Law Project. I'm now paralegal and I don't intend on going anywhere. I love what I do, I love what we do, and I love serving the community. So keep the Senior Law Project in mind, any of you that are over 60 or have relatives that are over 60. Our services are free of charge, and we're always there. Like Sugar said, we'll go out into the community to help people. And I just want to, I want to say some words about other city employees, but I don't want to leave anyone else out, so I'm not going to mention names, but there are such great city employees. I couldn't have done any of these things without the support of my coworkers, my supervisors, my managers, colleagues. The Race for the Cure is a success because city employees are willing to join. That's why it's a success. People join. And I just wanted to say, we have a great, we have great employees here at the city, and all of them should really be recognized. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, that's great. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Really, it's an extraordinary, extraordinary department of the city. The Senior Law Project is one that we just get raves about it all the time, and I have no negative feedback whatsoever. It's really, I hope you keep it that way. Thank you very much. I see, well, you qualify, that's why, Mayor Protam. Okay. For our next item, I'd like to recognize the Senior of the Quarter, and to make this presentation, I'll ask Mel Henkin, a member of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, to consult. Mel, I think you'd better consult with her right away. Are you all right? Okay. Good seeing you, my friend.
Good morning. He's got more energy than we do. How you doing, buddy?
It's my pleasure to honor a person who represents the qualities we admire in individuals who are helping our community. The recipient of the Senior of the Quarter recognition is James Eads. I first met James... I first met James when I began my volunteer work at Jude 22, an emergency food bank serving low-income seniors in need. James first served as a volunteer making food bags, cleaning refrigerators and freezers, carrying bags for seniors to their cars, and helping deliver food to homebound seniors. James then joined the Board of Directors and helped make policy decisions that assist with the operation of the center. Seniors love his positive attitude and the manner in which he treats them. He is always ready to lend a helping hand and volunteers for whatever is needed. We thank James for his contributions to the senior community and for making Las Vegas a better place for all of us. And by the way, if you would like to nominate a senior who lives in the city of Las Vegas' boundaries for his or her community involvement, please contact the city's Neighborhood Services Department to obtain a nomination form. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's the young lady out there?
That's Hattie Soil. She's the project manager for Jude 22.
Okay, very good. Maybe you'll make reference to her as well.
I certainly will make reference to her. I don't know how to thank you all for this award. Even though it has my name on it, I'm going to take it for my grandparents, Nancy and Henry, and for my parents, Jimmy and Juanita Eads, because they're the ones who, all of my life, when I received a letter saying that I'd gotten this award, it invoked a memory that I hadn't had in years, of growing up in Buffalo, New York, and getting up in the middle of the winter with my dad and my granddad to go shovel the snow from the convent to the school. They always taught me to give, that our blessings were to be shared, and, oh, and I've been so blessed, and I haven't got enough to give back to this city. I thought I was going to come here and live in obscurity. It didn't happen. It didn't happen. And you get the benefit of Nancy and Henry's grazing and Jimmy and Juanita's grazing. Thank you very much for this award, but I do it separate in their name.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I meant to mention, I meant to mention all these people who wouldn't let me live in obscurity, like Hattie Soil, Maria, and Mel. Thank you all very much, and thank the city.
Thank you. Congratulations again, thank you. That's great, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mel. For our last item, Councilman Brown will recognize Flash Flood Awareness Month. The councilman is the chair of the Flood District, and it's appropriate that he makes his presentation. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. And likewise, you represent the city on that same board. It's that time of year again, and just briefly, for those in the audience and watching, early '80s, we, in Southern Nevada, received some devastating floods, if you remember, especially down in the Strip, millions of dollars in damage and unfortunately a loss of life. And in 1985, the legislature created the Regional Flood Control District, because up until then, the city would do their flood control, the county, Henderson, there was no master plan, and essentially that's what the district is. It's the master planning agency for flood control and flood protection. And the mission is simple, to protect property, but more importantly, to protect lives. And for the past 20-plus years, we have done a great job in doing that. Unfortunately, we don't know when the storms hit, Mother Nature can be twisted, she can be devastating, and with all the new residents coming into Las Vegas, it's so important to take the opportunity during flood season to raise the awareness levels. Many have seen the very successful campaign we use with the billboards and the commercials capturing just, just the people's interest and understanding more about, again, how devastating these events can be. But we have with us today our general manager, Gail Fraser, Public Information Manager, Betty Hollister. We certainly want to present the proclamation to them, Your Honor. And just to give you a point of reference, over the last 20 years, we have built 73 detention basins throughout Southern Nevada, over 445 miles of storm drains and channels, and yet we're only halfway there. We still have well over a billion dollars to go and that much more infrastructure to truly reach that point in time when we can, we can say that we are 100% protected. So, Gail, if you'd like to say a few words.
I think I'll call you chairman, because you're the chairman of my board, the Regional Flood Control District instead of councilman, but we do two things. One, we keep floods away from people, and that's what you heard the chairman say, about 73 detention basins and over 400 miles of channel and storm drain. And the other thing that we do that is just as important is trying to keep people away from floods. And that's what's so important about this flood safety, flood message, flood safety message. Don't drive through the water if you can't see the road, and let's have a fatality-free flood season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do you want to say it? You sure? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilman. Okay, that's it. Thank you. I'll leave this here. Good morning once again, everybody. We'll call item number eight at this time. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 25, it's contract number 060044-Postmodern Project at 301 Stewart Avenue Awards, Westlake Reed-Lakoski. Staffs asked to strike. And item number 52 is New Liquor Cater License, Squiggy's, 3805 West Herr Avenue. Staffs asked to hold that until August, the second 2006 meeting. Council members, are there any other meeting, any other items that we need to bring forward at this time? See, and then, Your Honor, make a motion. We bring these two items forward and take your preparation, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you. Item number nine is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular City Council meeting of June 21, 2006. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Yes, Your Honor, no addition or deletion. I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes, please.
Thank you, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you. Items 10 through 44, except for item 24, which will be trailed to be heard in the afternoon following item number 78, they're on the consent agenda, they're considered to be routine, and they're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted on one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time for the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, Mayor Protam.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion to approve items 10 through 44, with the exception of 25, with all conditions, please.
Thank you, let's vote on that, please.
And that's except 24.
Except 24, that's correct.
Yes, all 24 and 25.
Right. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you. All right, item 45 is a report from Dr. Selby, our city manager, on emerging issues. Doctor?
Good morning, mayor and council. I have a number of items to report today. Some neighborhood cleanups are going to happen, a couple this weekend in Ward 5, the, on July 22nd, this Saturday. One begins at 8:00 a.m., and it's going to be in the east part of the ward, roughly between Harrison and Bonanza. The second will be in the Biltmore area, about 9:30 this same morning. And then there's a third one, the following Saturday, July 29th, in the area of Washington, Robin, and Vegas Drive. So anybody that wants more information about these can call 229-6405. Thursday, on July 27th, downtown here, there's a free competition, free to the public, to watch the Score Desert Racing Pit Crew Challenge, and there'll be crews from the desert racing teams that'll be competing for a $10,000 cash prize. That starts at 6:00 and goes on until 10:00 p.m. on Fremont Street. There'll be a neighborhood meeting in Ward 2 that same night, Thursday night, July 27th, to talk about concerns that have arisen regarding Anson Park. The discussion will revolve around maintenance of the park and the surrounding neighborhood. That will take place at Johnson Middle School at 7701 Ducharme, which is just west of Buffalo, and that meeting starts at 7:00 p.m. And then a series of events on August 1st, which is National Night Out. It's the night that the cities in the United States devote to trying to make their neighborhoods safer. It's heavily participated in and supported by the city and by our Metropolitan Police Department. Several of those events I'd like to list here. One, again, is at Anson Park in Ward 2. Another will be at 15th and Fremont Street. A third will be at Hunter Circle Park in Ward 3. Actually, Sheriff Young will be at the Circle Park event, is my understanding. There's also several in Ward 1, one at the Meadows Senior Mobile Home Park, one at Sartini Plaza, Downs Tower, Clark Towers, and Quail Estates East. All of these events start at 6:00 p.m., and anybody wanting more information about them can call 229-6405 or check the city website, lasveganavada.gov.
And I also know, Dr. Selby, that there's going to be one of Desert Shores, because I'll be there.
Okay.
I hope somebody else will be there with me, but I will be there.
That's all I have for you today.
Okay, any questions of Dr. Selby? All right, thank you very much for the report. Item 46 is a report and possible action related to the Las Vegas Strategic Plan priorities concerning, quote, "revitalize and invigorate our mature areas and the urban core," end quote, "and, quote, 'create, integrate, and manage orderly and sustainable development and growth of all our communities, of our community.'" This pertains to all wards.
We have a couple presentations for you today, and let me introduce them just by way of refresher. The council has had a couple discussions about performance management, performance measurement, performance budgeting, and you'll recall from our strategic plan, we set some priorities, and then, in follow-up discussions with the council, set some key performance indicators, or KPIs, as we're calling them for short. Those KPIs are designed to integrate a whole lot of data to give a high-level view of our performance on the city's strategic priorities. And although these priorities cross department boundaries, they are all basically given to one of our, a member of our executive team to track and monitor and report on periodically. Today, we have a couple of those presentations. You'll hear from Scott Adams, our director of the Office of Business Development, who will report on strategic goal number eight, which is revitalize and invigorate the mature areas and the urban core of the city. And you'll also hear from the Director of Planning and Development, Margot Wheeler, who will talk about Priority One and the key performance indicators there, that priority being create, integrate, and manage orderly and sustainable development and growth in the city. So, Scott?
Very good. We look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Doug. While we're listed here attributed to this goal, we are just simply a team leader on this particular goal. There are a number of other departments that have been involved in achieving and accomplishing the goals and objectives under this particular goal. Those are Field Ops, Public Works, Finance, Planning and Development, Neighborhood Services, and I want to thank all of those directors and their departments for all the work that they've done to help achieve the accomplishment of the objectives under this goal. In this particular goal, we selected four very simple key performance indicators. Those indicators are those that we feel that if we monitor those and track those over time, we're really going to get a good pulse check as to how things are going in the mature areas and the core area of our community. I think a big theme here is the RDA, the redevelopment area, that the RDA represents a significant part of the mature area of our community, and if we monitor the progress of how we're doing in the RDA over time, we're probably getting a good sense of how that older part of our community is progressing. So we selected four key performance indicators. The first is the total private investment that is being expressed and moving forward in the RDA. The change in value of the RDA, that's an easy one, because of the RDA legislation, we have to track assessed values for tax increment financing purposes. The capital investment being made in the RDA by the city or the RDA, and then finally, this is really a manifestation of our efforts, the percent change in population in the RDA. Obviously, if we've put a lot of money into the RDA and our mature areas, if people start to move into that area, that's a good, strong indicator of success. Starting with the first one, total private investment in the RDA. As you know, we have been monitoring and tracking private investment through a number of reports that we generate. We have been very carefully now tracking all the private investment that we're aware of that takes place within the RDA in downtown, and we've been able to measure that over time. Back in May of 2005, and we're really kind of benchmarking from this point forward, we saw about $440 million under construction in May of '05, with $5.9 billion planned in the RDA. And in May of 2006, we're now at just shy of $1 billion. This was in May, now, since May, it's even gone larger. Just shy of $1 billion under construction with about $10.8 billion in the pipeline planned as planned investment in the area. I think, again, back to the key performance indicator, this reflects an upward trend and interest on the part in the investment community and coming into the older mature areas of our community to make investments. These are obvious, I've given reports to you in the past at the RDA board meetings. The key new construction investments have been Soho Lofts, Newport Lofts, Allure, World Market Center Phases 1 and 2, Enterprise Park, and in West Las Vegas, we've had four projects under construction, the Southern Nevada Water Authority Building and Streamline Tower. So there's been a number of projects coming online that are now under construction, some of those near the end of construction, some of those just beginning in that one-year period. Also, there's a number of key planned projects. A lot of those fall in the realm of residential. We now have more than 50 entitled residential projects, and I should mention, these numbers do not include Union Park. Union Park, we're really looking at like we look at the rest of the RDA. As projects come forward, we enter into agreements and they get entitled, they'll go on the list, but as you know, from a previous presentation made by Newland, the Union Park project alone is somewhere between $3 to $5 billion, and until we start to separate out the actual projects and move in forward, we're not going to put those projects on the list and start tracking those. Another key indicator, performance indicator, is the change in value of the redevelopment area. As you know, there is a boundary established for the redevelopment area within which the assessor separates and tracks assessments for purposes of determining the tax increment that occurs in that area to go into the RDA Special Revenue Tax Increment Trust Fund. And in fiscal year 2002-2003, the value of the RDA was $286.9 million, as reported by the assessor, and in the current assessment year, the assessment was $596.3 million. It was 107.86% increase over that five-year period. Now, we looked at that a little bit deeper to find out just what were the dynamics that caused the increase in that area, and we found that when you broke out new construction, land values, and general rises in assessments, we found that 50% of that increase was due to new construction and land values. And so it wasn't just a matter of a reassessment process, it was actual new projects coming online, hitting the rolls, represented in new construction tax increase. And then, the other trend that happened during this period, as you know, land values have risen rapidly in the RDA, not just in the downtown, but in the RDA. We've seen land values go in the downtown area from $40 a square foot to $200 a square foot, and those new values, because they've closed, actually closed sales on new numbers, they're now hitting the tax rolls at those higher values. So, half of that increase is attributable to new construction and land value increase. Another one that, unfortunately, I haven't had the numbers yet, and we'll have it our next report on this, is we are working to isolate the value of the city and RDA's capital investment in the RDA. And what this will do, when we get those numbers, we're going to be able to calculate an internal rate of return on the city's investment through the RDA or the city directly in the RDA. What we're going to be able to know is what we're spending in capital investment in that area, we'll know what our private investment is and what the tax increases are, so we can actually calculate an internal rate of return, and I will have that available to you at the next report. And we found that when you broke out new construction, land values, and general rises in assessments, we found that fifty percent of that increase was due to new construction and land values. And so it wasn't just a matter of a reassessment process. It was actual new projects coming online hitting the rolls represented in new construction tax increase. And then the other trend that happened during this period, as you know, land values have risen rapidly in the RDA. Not just in the downtown, but in the RDA. We've seen land values go in the downtown area from forty dollars a square foot to two hundred dollars a square foot. And those new values, because they've closed, actually closed sales on new numbers, they're now hitting the tax rolls at those higher values. So half of that increase is attributable to new construction and land value increase. Another one that unfortunately I haven't had the numbers yet, and we'll have it our next report on this, is we are working to isolate the value of the city and RDA's capital investment in the RDA. And what this will do, when we get those numbers, we're going to be able to calculate an internal rate of return on the city's investment through the RDA or the city directly in the RDA. What we're going to be able to know is what we're spending in capital investment in that area. We'll know what our private investment is and what the tax increases are so we can actually calculate an internal rate of return, and I will have that available to you at the next report. The final key performance indicator is population increase. Obviously, this is sort of the end-line measure, that at the end of the day, if everything's happening, you create value, you create interest in your core area, and you get people to start moving back into your core area. Because in most core areas of communities, you saw outmigration as your community suburbanized. And from, in two thousand and one, the population estimate of the RDA is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-nine, and two thousand and five, the population is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and two. Now, we're speculating on where that may go, with two thousand to twenty-five hundred units projected to occur in the downtown over this next year alone, based on what's actually under construction. If only twenty percent of those are occupied, which we think is a fairly conservative number, you know, assuming a lot of those are going to be investor units, a lot of those are going to be second, third residences, that would realize a four to five hundred population increase or another population increase almost the same as we increased over the last four years. So clearly, the trend is heading upward in terms of population in the RDA. And that is the end of my report.
Well, thank you very much for the report. When we define population, we talk about people who will be living there three hundred sixty-five days a year, as distinct from somebody who has purchased the apartment or the condo and will be coming in for two weeks.
That's correct. They, somebody that would actually be counted for census purposes as being a resident.
But as far as the tax rolls are concerned, they will?
Well, they still go on the rolls, and those values would be reflected in the assessed values.
Are there any limitations as to how we can expend the monies that are accumulated in the RDA fund?
The state law does speak to that. There is a menu of eligible activities that one can spend, that the RDA can spend its TIF on. It generally is tied back to, sort of like retained earnings in a company going back into the area to further the redevelopment of the area, either in it or adjacent to the redevelopment area, so that the combined efforts of all that funding continues to further redevelopment.
All right, thank you. Were there any other questions?
Yes, please. Mr. Adams, let me ask a question here. How do we find a balance here in some of our more mature areas of town where, you know, we have basically had to kind of take a stance and put like an unspoken moratorium on more apartments because the market says you need more rooftops in certain areas of the city in order to attract economic development and to have that type of growth that you want to have? How do we find a balance where we could receive some of these benefits to kind of help offset, you know, some of the shortfalls that we're having in these neighborhoods?
I think that's going to be our collective challenge over the next several years. We are now, I think, one of the key findings here is that we're now realizing very significant investment in the RDA, which will manifest itself in significant tax increment finance revenues. Now, the question is, how do we strategically use those revenues to capitalize the very kind of project you're talking about? We now need to start matching up those revenue streams into projects such as apartment projects or public infrastructure investments to catalyze investment in areas that maybe not, they have not caught on and started the revitalization like some of the core areas of downtown.
Have we reached that point yet where we should start that discussion?
Well, we are building and will be bringing forward at a future meeting, a capital improvement plan for the redevelopment area that projects what those revenue streams will be, and then builds a case for how those revenue streams should be reinvested back in the RDA. And that'll be reported at a future meeting.
But I did not mean to interrupt you, Congressman.
No, you're fine, Mayor. I think one of the concerns that I have, and I know we've addressed it from this council, and I saw it on the news the other day where, you know, people were driving around just trying to find an apartment, and with the number of condo conversions that, you know, have gone on in this city within the last year, it's just causing a major concern for people here that it's appearing that we're pricing people out of the city here. And so we are just trying to find a happy medium here as far as just trying to make sure that there are some benefits to our more mature areas of town and that we are making sure that we offset a number of these costs to bring in development to these areas that are attracting people who want to move back into the inner core of the city.
I should remind the council that also there is built into the TIF legislation, the eighteen percent affordable housing set aside, and I should, that gets to be as significant down the road as well. As the TIF funds start to build up, that set aside really builds up, and you're going to have more, a greater ability to affect the production of affordable housing than we've had in the past as well.
And the live-work people, as I understand it, they've assembled about a five-block area in the downtown, and they plan to have apartment projects as a component of their development, do they not?
Yes, yes. We've actually been working with them on apartments that would be within reach rent-wise of people that work downtown.
Good, that's terrific. Well, this could not be happening, and I have to say this as the mayor, this could not be happening without the support of the council in all of our efforts as far as downtown and RDA redevelopment, the city manager's office, and every department in the city is either directly or indirectly involved with our success. And I think we have turned the corner here. This is going to be a very important fund of monies which will improve our city over the coming years, and it will only get better and better and better because success will breed success. And it's very exciting, really exciting. Thank you. Ms. Wheeler?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor and Council. I have the privilege of presenting priority number one, which is to, where's my, figure out this here? Okay. What do I do here? There we go. Which is to create and integrate and manage orderly and sustainable development in the community. This is one that has to do with the long-term growth of the community and ensuring that we do so in a fashion to create the world-class city that we know that we are now and that we intend to become in the forefront of that category. To do so, there's a number of indicators that the city administration has identified, and that has to do with land use distribution, ensuring that the master plan priorities that are adopted by the council are actually implemented through the budget process, and also to ensure that our development is sustainable and environmentally sound over the long term. The first measurement is with regard to land use mix. And what we're looking at here is ensuring what we frequently see is the jobs/housing balance, ensuring that not only citywide, but within neighborhoods, we have housing, different types of housing, jobs, and also recreational opportunities. And unfortunately, that seems to be a little bit off. But what we find is that our city is predominantly single-family, has been over the duration of time, and will continue to be so into the future. When we compare with other large cities that are growing quickly, those seen here, Phoenix, Fort Worth, San Antonio, Jacksonville, we see that other cities also are predominantly single-family and have a lower portion of commercial and industrial land. When we look at the chart, however, we see that Las Vegas has more single-family and less industrial than is the average. Our commercial seems to be holding steady, as does our multifamily. But so the importance is to ensure that we don't become a bedroom community within Southern Nevada, one that is not providing jobs for our citizens but only housing. Therefore, we look at our build-out. We still intend to remain, as per plan now, a predominantly single-family area, but, and our industrial is still of concern. When we look at our neighborhoods and without, throughout the city, we see that single-family is dispersed well throughout the community. We also see that multifamily, interestingly, while we feel that sometimes it's only located in certain areas, we see that it continues to be dispersed throughout the community. But again, we need to ensure that multifamily opportunities occur in the new growth areas so that our multifamily housing stock is not only in the older areas. Looking at our commercial, we see that there are areas of significant commercial, of course, within the downtown area, and then also in some of our commercial strip areas, predominantly Rancho, Decatur, Sahara, and Charleston. Again, we need to ensure that commercial opportunities are dispersed throughout the community. And then industrial. We take a look at our industrial parks, the Tech Center, Enterprise Park, and Spectrum, see those as primary industrial areas, and then also in the older downtown, especially in the southern area of the city along the I-15 corridor. We have had this discussion, and as many of you know, at the regional level, the SNRPC is doing a study right now on the industrial needs for Southern Nevada. Industrial parks are one of the largest employers in land uses. And again, we need to ensure that we have properly zoned and land for these types of uses and that we implement, that we not change and succumb to the pressure to build more single-family housing on land that should be job-creating in the long term. We take a look at our employment and population density. This is the land housing, jobs/housing mix I talked about. This is where our higher-density population is. Then we look at where our jobs are. You can see that it's still heavily centered in the downtown. And then we take a look at the mix of the two. So again, we need to make sure that our jobs follow where our housing is. Also, we need to provide services. You know many of these issues, and certainly we know when a grocery store moves out, it has a tremendous impact on a neighborhood. Providing these local services, grocery locations, also school locations, over which we don't have thorough control, but we need to plan, as you know, in the areas where we expand. Also, city parks, of course, we've done such a tremendous job in this in recent years. And bus stops, our transit. Density is so closely tied to transit that this is key. The second measurement within this priority has to do with the implementation of the master plan through the budget and the capital improvement program. As you recall, in January of '05, the department put together this document to take every single program and plan that needed to be implemented, put it into one document to ensure that we're following all of the master plan items that the council approves. We found that in two thousand and six, forty percent of the budgeted projects were not in the master plan. In fiscal '07, that figure is twenty-nine percent, and we're working very hard to ensure that in the future, all of the projects that are in the master plan are in the budget for your consideration. A few examples of that, you see the policy down below, which ensures that the, in the downtown, historic structures be adaptably reused. We, of course, know the post office, the Post Modern, is underway and is budgeted. This is looking at the relationship of our parks to our trail system, to ensure that our trails just don't go anywhere, that they're linked to our parks, which we're doing. And this is a program that was, is with a significant contribution of both the finance and the Public Works Department. We're looking at ensuring all projects that are proposed for the budget are reviewed for their entry into the master plan. If they are not in there, that they are proposed for adoption, and that's what comes forward to the city council so that we have complete integration of the master plan with the CIP. And then the last KPI here has to do with sustainable development. We are logging and keeping track of the numbers, the measures with regard to not only individual projects that are designed in a environmentally sound way, but also in the developments. As you know, we have the Traditional Neighborhood General Plan designation and traditional development zoning, so it's both citywide and project-wide that we're taking a look at sustainable development. The Water District Building, Malaski Company is putting forward is lead certification, is pending on that. We have a small project downtown where they took an auto repair garage and are redoing that for offices and living. And then one of our favorites, this is the Animal Foundation's Regional Animal Campus. Just this morning in the newspaper, it was the announcement of the two thousand and six American Institute of Architects National Top Ten Green Projects for this project. And that's a significant accomplishment for Las Vegas to begin to be recognized in the forefront of this type of sustainable development. Of course, this is where I got my pup, so I really like this facility. Moving on to the Las Vegas Springs Preserve, a tremendous project that I think will have national acclaim when it's completed. They are going for LEED Platinum Certification on all of their buildings. That is so very rare that if that is accomplished, that will really put us on the map in sustainable development. Another project at Main and Bonanza, housing project going on adjacent, right to downtown, that is also LEED certification pending. We will be able to measure these and ensure that we have quantifiable proof of the implementation of these measurements, and towards that goal of orderly and sustainable development in the community, making this city the world-class city that we know that it is.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Margot, could you go back to that slide when we're talking about the budget, the percentage as far as the capital plan?
I have no idea. That's an excellent question. Let's see. I guess I got to go one by one?
Next.
That one?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just explain a little bit more in detail what we're talking here. I got a little bit confused when we...
You bet. Mayor and Councilman Brown, this one, this slide, what we're trying to track is those projects that are in the budget. What percentage of those projects budgeted are referenced in the master plan? Okay, so the, just the direct relationship. The forty-seven percent in '06 is showing us that of the budgeted projects, forty-seven percent were not referenced in the city's master plan.
And this is the master plan from a planning perspective?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Right.
Give me an example.
An example would be...
Was the museum one of the examples?
That is in the master plan. As I showed, as you saw in the slide that followed, let's see if I can get this. For instance, there, we're showing the policy number that says buildings in the downtown, which have been identified as historic, should be reused. And so that's the master plan policy, and that is within the budget. So that is a project that's in the budget and in the master plan.
Why is that, why is that number so low?
Um, there's...
If you, if you can, give me a couple examples of the bigger-ticket items that are not in the master plan but were in the budget.
Off the top of my head, I believe that there are some that might be, there might be a park that's in an area that was not previously identified. There might be some street improvements that were not identified in the master plan. And this is not necessarily to say that the budget is wrong, it's to say that the master plan needs to better address where the needs are, and it needs to be updated. So it isn't that one document supersedes the other, it's that they need to be brought more into conformance.
Dr. Selby?
If I may expand a little bit on that. I think what started to happen is the master plan approved by the council included a certain number of projects, but as new projects started to come onto the budget and the council was interested in adding project, we never brought the master plans back and got them updated. So what you'll see as a result of our process is more amendments to the master plan being brought to the council, so that it's a more sequential process rather than do a master plan with projects that the council wanted in there, and then it gets set on the shelf and other projects take precedence over. We need to just keep coming back to you with updates to that planning document or those documents to make sure that we're all in concert as we move forward.
Still, I'm missing the connection. When we refer to the master plan, that's our adopted City of Las Vegas planning document, master plan. But RTC, flood control, sanitation, they all have master plans that are incorporated by resolution, I guess, to adopt. So forty-seven percent of, fifty-three percent that are outside, do we have an example? Do we have like a hundred and twenty million dollar project that wasn't in the plan? And I think where we're going with the policy is wonderful, but I just can't make the connection between the numbers that are being shown and what's being presented as narrative.
All right, Mr. Benson?
Good morning, Your Honor. Mark Vincent, Finance and Business Services. I'm not exactly sure how the percentages were derived, but my, one guess I have, and I have to ask Margot, is I assume that a lot of the RTC and flood projects were excluded from that calculation.
Sure.
So that's one explanation of why the percentage seems so off. There are, and the other issue we have is oftentimes our master plans, for example, the parks element, doesn't identify specific projects. It identifies specific needs, neighborhood parks, regional parks, pocket parks, things of that nature. Doesn't always identify a specific project. And I think in some cases, where we may have identified a project that we have been working on, it's been on our parks list, our parks master list from previous... on, it's been on our parks list, our parks master list from previous years, wasn't necessarily identified as a need in the master plan. And I, and I can't, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I can't think of an example, but I certainly can, can, can find some of those.
I won't beat the dead horse, but I think the forty-seven percent is a deceptive number. If it's forty-seven percent of only those that we consider part of the master plan, okay, let's highlight that. But if we're a one and a half billion dollar budget, that forty-seven percent of 1.5 billion, that's inappropriate and I think sends the wrong message. Again, the policy and where we're going with the tracking of the dollars is fine, but I think we should get more specific in defining the parameters of using this policy. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. And instead of speculating, maybe during our briefing, you'll be, uh, bring us some particulars on this in order to resolve that.
And I have a follow-up?
Certainly.
A second question?
Sure.
Thank you. Your dialogue, Margot, as far as the commercial, industrial, parks and, and that. Likewise, I, I think that the city, from a geographical standpoint and from a development standpoint, is unique in, in many ways. And there was one of the maps up there. I think that you delineated the commercial and industrial and residential. Can you get to those? Any one of the three will do.
Um, the ones that had the employment and the jobs, I mean, and the employment and population density?
Yeah, it was map of the city that kind of highlighted industrial, business park areas.
They can go with the overhead, it'd probably be faster to do it this way.
Yeah, that's perfect. Perfect. Where's the overhead? Yeah. Now, and if we could zoom in on that, the, the one thing, in, in a perfect world and on a blank canvas, we can certainly identify ways, as you say, industrial is a, a large employer, but the city of Las Vegas, Summerlin West Development Agreement, pretty much done. I don't think we're gonna go in there and create anything that isn't already approved by the general growth people. In the northwest, most of the new BLM land that has come online is likewise going through a development agreement. So that, when, when we look for the commercial overlays, the industrials, it doesn't take in the two very, very large unincorporated county areas in the northwest that skew a little bit as far as the, the mixture. And if part of this strategy is, and this is hypothetical, that we should focus on more business parks, but abandon any priority to create an industrial park? If, if those are the kind of balances we're looking for, but I don't think we can go across the board and have a traditional mix of these type uses, I think we're too far down the road. Unless, of course, we go out beyond Kyle Canyon and, and a fifteen to twenty-year planning horizon window for the city incorporating these new. The only opportunity, I, from your presentation, that appears to be realistic is some of the transportation corridors that have been identified by RTC Rancho and, and some of those that you could create that commercial mixed use, apartment use. And again, I, I think this is wonderful. It gives a great perspective, but maybe not today, but in a future briefing, I'd like to get deeper into that strategy to find out where, where we're going from a planning perspective and targeting that mix. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. I, I think that, um, we touched upon this at the RTC's last meeting when we talked about these, uh, artificial, in effect, uh, boundaries that separate us from the unincorporated area and from the incorporated area of North Las Vegas, uh, but for the fact that those are the boundaries. People don't know that. And, uh, uh, we were driving yesterday when we attended, um, Councilman Ross's folks' funeral. Uh, we drove around the great northwest, went past North Las Vegas. And if we don't have the land, I think that we could resolve the issues as far as the ratios are concerned with interlocal agreements with North Las Vegas. And, uh, they have plenty of land out there. And if we're not gonna consolidate with them, we can enter into interlocals for industrial parks if we feel that's appropriate. And maybe that's another reason why we should pursue discussions about consolidation because we do not have the land, as Councilman Brown references, for industrial parks. We're out of it.
And Mayor, as you know, um, on the SNRPC Board, um, through Scott Adams' leadership, the economic study that is underway right now is specifically to address the need for industrial land, and that is region-wide. And that study is underway and that is, just as you say, that we may not be able to accommodate within the city, but within the region, it's, it's crucial.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. The mayor makes a good point. Here we are at the county, the city, North Las Vegas, and you just answered one of my questions in regards to, is there no regional master plan? Are we as, as local governments taking a look at the whole region, the whole valley in general? Is that happening?
Yes, sir. That's the, the purpose of the SNRPC, the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition. And again, the, the study that I refer to has been funded by them, by the member agencies and is to look at specifically this issue of the need for industrial land within the region.
And if I may, Your Honor...
Certainly.
You spoke of the master plan and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I kind of view that as a living document. As we are perceiving the future growth of this city, that document will change as, as, as well as everything else will. It's important to, for me, Director, that you recognize how, how much I appreciate your staff and your direction and thoughts towards the great northwest, uh, including public works and keeping me focused, helping me keep straight in regards to development out there. We have the opportunity with that blank slate, that wide-open canvas, to create the kind of community that we, that we envision for the betterment of this community. It's also important to note that the residents of this community need that master plan, so they have some kind of idea of what's happening. So they feel comfortable in their own shoes in regards to growth and development. And that's imperative, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, thank you for the report. We appreciate it. And may I have a motion to accept the report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Again, I think we had, uh, two great reports. Uh, I certainly appreciate, uh, the leadership that there, uh, of you and the rest of my council members I serve with. Uh, I think it's important that people understand, you know, uh, what the city is doing and where they're going. And, uh, I, I certainly appreciate the two reports that we have. I think it shows why, uh, we're at the top of the, the graph when it comes to growth and sustainable development in, in the, the whole United States. And now I certainly make a motion to accept the motion, I mean, to make a motion to accept these reports and, uh, just ask that the staff continues to do a great job for us.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item forty-seven is discussion and possible action on the proposed legislative package that will be submitted to the Legislative Council Bureau on behalf of the City of Las Vegas for the 2007 legislative session. Mr. Olivas.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Uh, we have some handouts for you this morning. Uh, tis the season to start preparing for the next legislative session. Uh, this, this go-around, we're a little bit early. Uh, in August of 2004, we came before the council for our 2005 package. As you recall, at that time, I think it was my second day on the job. And, uh, so here we are, two, two years later. The handouts provide you a summary of some of the things that we're looking at for this next session. As you know, the session will be starting on February 5th of 2007, and these bill drafts will be due to the Legislative Council Bureau by September 1st. So we're in the process of, of getting prepared for that. We're working with the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, and our legislative officer, Saber Smith Newby and I are preparing to move up north. And, uh, so I think we have a good head, head start this year. Uh, as the handouts indicate, NRS 218 2413 allows cities of our size to submit no more than four bill draft requests. In today's package, we have a five for your consideration. We obviously, uh, talked to all of the department directors, city manager's office, of course, and the mayor and council in terms of determining, uh, what legislative agenda we'd like to have for this next session. The city manager's office took a look at all of the requests from the departments and, uh, came up with five for your consideration here today. The first item relates to lease-purchase agreements. Uh, there is a legislative subcommittee that has been meeting since the last session, and it has come to our attention that while counties and the state of Nevada have the authority to enter into these type of agreements, uh, cities do not have that same authority. And we're, we're very concerned that, that it, this is an option for us from a development perspective, uh, that, that we don't have the, the same authorities as other jurisdictions. Uh, we have been working with that interim study committee and they're aware of our concern. Uh, in fact, I talked to Senator Hardy last week, uh, expressed our concerns about that. Uh, he acknowledges that concern and in fact, uh, we've also talked to the Legislative Council Bureau, Brenda Erdos, who is responsible for ultimately making the decision for us whether they think we have the authority or not. And in fact, she mentioned to me that she did not think we had the authority and she would be willing to work with us. The next item relates to interlocal contracts. NRS 277, um, is a statute that talks about interlocal contracts and cooperative agreements. And those are agreements between various jurisdictions. Say us in the state, or us in the county, or us in the city of Henderson. Right now, the way that the statutes read, uh, is there is a limit of $2,000 in value uh, before you have to go and get a council approval or governing body approval. As you know, uh, most of the purchasing statutes have values that are somewhat beyond that. Uh, it's $25,000 for goods and services, $100,000 for public works. Uh, we think that this $2,000 number is a little bit low. And in fact, there's a, another section in NRS 277, it's 277-045, which talks about cooperative agreements. They're a similar agreement, they're just approved in different ways, and there is no threshold at all there. So anytime we do any amount of business with another jurisdiction, technically you should be seeing all of those agreements. So we'd like to align the threshold with other contract-related statutes. Uh, we'd also like to, to ensure that, that you're of course seeing the things that you need to see and the, the things that, that are of value, uh, but we think that there's an opportunity to streamline that process as well here. And the next item relates to development improvements. In NRS 338, there is a provision that says that as a part of a development agreement, a private developer for the, for the benefit of the developer, uh, they can construct water and sewer line extensions. Uh, and basically what we do is we have to reimburse them for part of those. And in fact, we can allow them to oversize those, those projects to meet future development needs. For instance, if we have a water line and the development needs a ten-inch line, and I'm not, not technical in this regard, so bear with me, and we think that because of future development, it should be a 20-inch line, then we would say, go ahead and put in the 20-inch line and we'll pay the difference between the cost of the ten, the 10-inch line and the 20-inch line. That helps us, uh, for future development and it's good for the developer as well. We think that, uh, this provision should be expanded to allow for some other off-site improvements, uh, that are within their purview on their construction job so that these things get done while the streets are torn up and while they're developing that project. The next item relates to the State Homeland Security Commission. During the last session, uh, there was a bill to eliminate city representation from the State Homeland Security Commission. Uh, we, we fought that bill. Uh, it, it did end up passing, so we don't have any representation there. We have been working on that since the session and, um, as early again as last week, I spoke directly with, uh, Dr. Carrison, who assured me that the Assistant Chief, Gene Campbell, is going to be added as a non-voting member of the commission. So this is one that we, we may or may not want to move forward with because we do now have representation there. We have been attending those meetings, but it doesn't allow, um, a city representative to go into closed-door sessions with the rest of the commission. We believe that we now have that representation, so we may not have a need for this. We have not received the official letter, but, uh, Dr. Carrison did, did assure me that we will be represented.
Why don't we have a, a vote?
Pardon me?
Why don't we have a vote?
Um...
That's not representation. Just because somebody can attend, like a fly on the wall?
The way that the, that the statute reads is there's, uh, seven voting members, uh, a total of fourteen members on the committee, so you have some voting, some non-voting. The thought process was, was that we need to have representation when they have the closed sessions. And we had some, actually, we had a bill last session that talked about giving us that same authority. Currently, if they have a closed-door session, we are not allowed to go back and, and listen to those deliberations, which we find, uh, of great concern. This will allow us back there to listen in, it's just not a, a voting member.
That's a, well, I, I don't know, uh, the feeling of the council, but to me, that's unacceptable.
We all feel the same, I think.
That's unacceptable. I mean, uh, let, if we're going for legislation, let's get a, a vote. That's what, that's what representation's all about, not to be able to attend a meeting and to...
Your Honor?
Yes?
Question for you. I'm a, I'm a former member of that board. I was, um, appointed by the governor to be on that State Homeland Security, um, Commission as a voting member. And I stepped down from the position to allow someone for fire and rescue to be on there because of the concerns that we have. We wanted to make sure, you know, that we had that type of representation on that board. Now, where it went from us having a voice and a vote on that, on that board to having no representation on there, that, that kind of baffles me.
Uh, you're absolutely correct, Councilman Weekly. Uh, Speaker Perkins had a bill last session that reduced the, the number of representatives on the, on the commission, and, uh, the bill did pass and, and we were taken off that. So we've been, we've been working with them ever since.
I think if we're gonna go up there, uh, let's go up for a vote, too.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman Ross.
Mr. Olivas, who, who sits on that commission now?
Uh, currently, it's, um, made up of, let's see, the seven voting members. It's the sheriff of each county, uh, population of 100,000 or more, uh, the chief of the county fire department, the agent in charge of the FBI in the state, um, an officer of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, and a member of the medical community. Those are the seven representatives that are voting members. The other seven are, are just selected at large.
Who were the other seven? Do you know?
I don't know. I, I...
I'm not, I'm trying to push you aside, but...
Yeah, here I don't...
To me, uh, unless you could vote and have the city's position heard, it really, uh, we don't pick up that much just to be in the room. We could get, um, we, we can get that information probably without having to be in the room. Yes, yeah.
Um, my question is, why did they set the, the total at seven of the voting members? Why wouldn't they have 11 or, or 13?
I think that's what it was initially. And, uh, we, in, in talking with, uh, Dr. Carrison and being involved in this last session, we were given no clear reason as to what the rationale was for, uh, changing it from a larger, uh, commission to a smaller commission, or, or who was in and, or why who, uh, was in and who was out. Uh, and Dr. Carrison got the, the same, uh, feelings during the session as well. So that's why he's been willing to get us back on. He feels that we're a, an important member and that may very well, uh, you know, coincide with, with our request to, to get it, us on as a voting member.
Well, if it's a board of how many? Thirteen?
Total fourteen, seven voting, uh, seven non.
Well, I don't know why they can't make it all fourteen vote. If they're attending the meetings and they're privy to the information, it doesn't make any sense to me. Unless somebody can explain that to me. Councilman Ross?
Well, Your Honor and council members, it concerns me greatly. We are the largest city in this state. Um, we're a prime target for such things in regards to homeland security. So publicly, I'd like to state that this is an important issue with us. I think we all take issue with this.
Ms. Fretwell, do you have anything you'd like to add?
We'll be happy to work to try and, and make it happen. I know we've talked over the last several months with, with the governor, our paid lobbyists, our internal lobbyists, members of the commission, the sheriff supports having the city on there, the undersheriff supports having the city on there, the governor supports having the city on there. Um, I'm hopeful that that kind of, uh, support in the interim will play out during the session to amend the... to amend the statute to allow us a voting spot on the board. There is no way that if something really bad happened in this community, that any one of us could stand alone. And between the county and the city, we need to be a part of that. We need to be privy to the information that's being discussed regarding security vulnerabilities. And if it's the council's desire, we will try and get this bill successfully passed to amend and make sure that we're represented on that board.
I think that's our will. Yes?
The final item is, we have some proposed changes for our city charter. As a little bit of history, the charter was established in 1983 and it's been amended in various forms, pretty much minor amendments, in every session other than two since that time. So we have a few items that we're proposing. We're talking about some general cleanup items through the city attorney's office to make sure that it reflects the services that we're providing to the community. So Brad Jerbik and his office are looking at those kind of things, so cleanup in general. The potential to create a salary commission so that we have a nonpartisan, community-based commission to look at the salaries of the mayor and council and look at the duties that you perform and make a nonpartisan determination as to where they think your salary should be. Also, perhaps change the chief judge selection process. Currently, the chief judge is selected by seniority and the chief judge does not have the authority to let someone else take over those duties, so there may be some opportunities there. As well as making potentially the recommending committee an optional committee, so that the council could determine if it was appropriate to have the recommending committee or not. So those are some of the items that we're looking to move forward on. There are in fact, five items and we have the authority to move forward on four.
Right, but I'm sure we'll be able to find some sponsor on the fifth. We always have been able to do that. Do you see that being a problem?
That is not a problem.
Okay. All right. The only comment I have, and then we'll open it up for the others. Always concerned when we talk about letting the legislature start considering our charter because we are a creature of the legislature and I think we have to tread very gently and follow very closely the efforts under the task and Tabor-type Proposition 13 proposals before we go in for what are relatively minor, with all due respect, tweaking of our city charter. I think the only point that is of any sense of urgency is a discussion with the judges about the seniority, but other than that, I think we have to be very careful as to how we proceed up there on that particular item.
I agree.
Okay. All right, anybody else, please? All right, thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Again, I agree with your point.
May I make a recommendation, since we do have five items? I think just want to make sure that it's clear in the recommendation that I move forward with looking at one of the items and I would recommend it being the interlocal contract threshold item.
Well, before I make that motion, I have a question then. Why is it so important today that we make a choice? I mean, let's see what happens in the next three or four months. You know, they don't go into session until, when do they start drafting these bills?
Our deadline is September 1st to submit our four bills. As Mayor Goodman mentioned, though, we do have the authority if, in fact, a month from now or two months from now, we identify a need to change a statute, that we can find a sponsor for it. So that's part of my responsibility. And so if, we want to make sure that the, I think the one that is the least important to us as a city is the interlocal contract threshold item. And that is an item that we could potentially get the Nevada League of Cities to sponsor. Even though we have on the lease purchase item, a committee that's already looking at that, I think that that one is important enough for us to keep as a placeholder in case for whatever reason, they don't move forward with making that proposed change for us. The easier one for us to manage and to get a bill for is the interlocal contract threshold item.
I wouldn't have a problem with that then. I'd make more of a stat recommendation.
Very good. Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Levis. Okay. Item 48 is discussion possible action concerning the proposed auto racing agreement between the city of Las Vegas and Vegas Grand Prix LLC. This pertains towards 1 and 5 in particular. Dr. Selby?
Mayor and council, just a few highlights of this proposed agreement. You recall the council approved an exclusive negotiating agreement for the city to be the host city for an international racing event, the Vegas Grand Prix. That event would occur April 6th, 7th, and 8th of 2007. The agreement that you're considering today would be a five-year agreement that would obligate the city to make its streets available once a year for five years to the racing Financial aspects of this limit the city's investment in this race event to $500,000, which is our contribution to improving our own streets. The first year estimate of cost for those street improvements is $1.8 million. Vegas Grand Prix is responsible for $1.3 million of that. So their investment in our city streets to put the race on is significant. Subsequent years will involve investments of $1 million or more in street improvements. Again, those remain the obligation of Vegas Grand Prix with no city obligation under this I need to call to your attention a clause in the agreement too regarding termination. In years 2, 3, and 4, because of the investment of Vegas Grand Prix, if we terminate this contract for reasons other than a breach of the agreement, failure of Vegas Grand Prix to comply with the terms of the agreement, we would reimburse them $1 million for their prior year's investment. That is, the kind of, those would be the kind of terminations that are strictly a discretion of the council, that we feel for whatever reason, that the event is not conducive to downtown Las Vegas, or we have other issues that are not defined in the agreement. That would be our obligation to reimburse that amount of money. The event itself will be open to the public except for the grandstand areas and the pit areas where there will be an admission charge. So the public is able to find a vantage point from a building in downtown or near the track. They'll be able to just watch the race, that segment of the race.
Free.
There will be an operation, pardon?
Free, yes. Without charge?
Without charge, right. Which is kind of unlike many other events that are hosted where admission is required to see the event. There will be an operations manual, so the agreement doesn't take care of all the logistics of roads opening and closing and access to particular buildings and mitigation of impacts on the Regional Transportation Commission bus routes. That's all to be addressed in an operations manual that will be provided to the city by Vegas Grand Prix. The council may be asked to entertain an ordinance to temporarily suspend speed limits on these streets. So they'll be, I understand that these vehicles go over 180 miles an hour, so. And our obligation also is not to entertain any other road race proposals 60 days before or after this event. It's a course through downtown. It would run from Grand Central Parkway counterclockwise, going down Bonneville through the underpass, turning left on Main Street, turning right on Carson, right on First, left on Bridger, left on Casino Center, right, back on to Carson, left on Fourth, and then left again on Ogden, back through the underpass and on to Grand Central Parkway. Representatives of Vegas Grand Prix are here if you have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Selby, and I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. As I understand it, the city would have to expend the $500,000 regardless of whether or not the race was going to take place in order to bring the streets up to the condition that you believe they have to be?
Actually, our estimates are about half that for a five-year period for maintenance and upgrades and the normal investment we would make in that route are about $250,000.
All right, so we're increasing it by about $250,000. All right. That's the only question that I have for Dr. Selby. Folks, why don't you identify yourselves for the record?
Mayor, council, I'm Dale Jensen, one of the two promoters. This is Brad Janover.
Mayor, Brad Janover, also one of the cup promoters of this event.
I'm Steve Johnson. I'm the president, chief executive officer of the Champ Car World Series.
Jim Freidenberg, president, chief executive officer of the Vegas Grand Prix.
Mark Rissman, 10120 Southeastern Avenue.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like you to tell us what you're doing in order to make sure that this is going to be a success. That's the most important thing as far as this council is concerned. I'm sure that we do not want to have an event of worldwide significance that is going to be covered by the media, both as far as television is concerned and all other aspects of the media. What are you doing to make this a world-class event, the first year in particular, because it's only going to get better and better after that, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Well, one of the main things, it's all about, it's all about the people. And we brought in, as you hire professional consultants, et cetera, to help you do your job and gain information and execute your desires, we've done the same thing. With Jim Freidenberg, who's produced over 72 races, you know, throughout the United States himself, he currently produces the Denver Grand Prix as well as will be producing the Grand Prix Arizona. In addition, he is, there's quite a few other races, I'll let him speak to that particularly, but his bio is not as important as that between Champ Car and Jim Freidenberg, we have a cast of about probably 400 or 500 people that are already lined up that do this day in and day out. They do this every week and throughout the United States, not only throughout the United States, but worldwide. Safety teams, people that lay out the tracks, et cetera, et cetera. And I can let, if we want to get down to specific questions or more specific, I can let them address it either from a operational standpoint or the league's standpoint.
Well, I know that this is going to be a three-day affair.
Correct.
And it's basically going to be a party for the city of Las Vegas.
Correct.
And the event will take place, the actual race will take place over three days. Is that correct?
Race is.
Race is, over three days. You'll also have a boxing match down on Fremont Street?
In the area, yes. Inside the track area, somewhere down there, we will have boxing, we believe, if we...
It's not as much of a race as it is a festival of speed for three days. The race just happens to be a big component of it. We intend to have a variety of different activities down there, for example, some of the BMX.
If I step back, maybe it won't bubble as much.
No, matter of fact, I brought up. Yep, we use those in these two areas. So we'll just leave this off for now and see if we can, yeah, let's just see if that's, because I can't see anything that's gone wrong.
Testing one, two.
One on each side over here.
It is on, okay.
I'm so sorry for rubbing.
Why the mayor's, why?
Are you going to just?
Oh, yes, I've already turned him down.
You've already turned him down?
Yeah, that's, that's...
Check. One, two.
Great candy, love.
He was enjoying the lakes in Minnesota.
What's happening? Case, Kelly. That's what they're saying, I don't know. No, we should be fine. Yep.
Good. Sorry, fellas.
No problem.
I think this is important that we tell the public what's going to be happening here.
All right. Anyway, Mayor, if I'm certain?
Okay, we have everybody, all right, we're all set. Wait, we need our clerk. Here we go. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. And the question was, what may we expect as far as the promotion itself in order to guarantee us that the city will have a successful event?
First of all, Mayor and council, thank you. One of the things that Brad and I do a lot of, besides I talked about Jim and his professional ability to actually execute a race, is over 120 times a year, I produce events in Phoenix based on my involvement with both the basketball team and the baseball team. In addition, Brad and I have produced movies and TV films and doing one of these things is producing an event. It is just simply event production, number one. Number two, I have the financial resources and as does the league to make sure and ensure success on this project, that we have no, you know, we will not let it fail type thing. And these are one of those things that you just kind of have to go in and after the first year, kind of feel your way around after the first year. You've sorted out any of the small issues you've had and then you just make it bigger and better for next year. One of the things I'd like to do is have Jim Freidenberg tell you a little bit about some of the activities that go on in addition to just simply, you know, cars driving around the track, et cetera, and if you don't mind if he took over it this way.
In addition to the Champ Car race, we'll also have a couple of support races as well. So we'll have practice and qualifying and racing on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. One of the unique things that we're going to do in Las Vegas is open the track a couple of hours every day at lunch so that the hotel guests can get in and out and delivery vehicles can get in and out, which is very unique. But that was one of the concerns of the casino owners. During the three-day festival, we will have, in addition to racing, concerts, the boxing as you talked about. We will have action sports, we'll have lifestyle expos, we'll have music festivals. We're going to encompass first Friday since April 6th, this first Friday of April and encompass that hopefully within our event as well.
Well, we've addressed safety, obviously, with all of them and addressed their concerns, they have, in, in every meeting that we've, we've had, said that they're very comfortable with the plan that we've put together. We'll have a disaster plan as well. From a safety perspective, from a temporary road course, with the concrete barriers and with the catch fence and then the no-man's-land fence that is between the track and the spectators, there hasn't been an issue in the 30-some-odd years that kart and Champ Car have been racing on temporary road circuits. In fact, there have been numerous issues on permanent facilities, and I think that's more due to the speeds than anything. When we go around city streets, we don't obviously go as fast as we do when we're in permanent facilities. So when accidents do happen, knock on wood, they're a lot less apt to, to cause any injuries and certainly haven't caused any deaths, which is, which is pretty phenomenal.
And then, I guess, the other concern or question that was given to me was dealing with local vendors via fences, barricades, porta-potties, you name it. Is there something that we would have in place via monies in escrow or some type of bond that we would look at as far as ensuring that when all else is said and done, everyone is taken care of and we are making sure we've taken care of our local vendors?
Well, we don't see a need to go to extraordinary or extraordinary measures to, to do that. Champ Car is, is well-financed, I'm well-financed, I think my record and the fact of who I am, where I live, et cetera, you know, very close to Las Vegas, I mean, we want to just treat this as a normal trade, you know, type operation. I mean, we're not, I don't know that we necessarily, or what we could do to, you know, to ensure that, we're not going to walk around and leave a bunch of unpaid bills, et cetera. Most of the money that is being spent on this is going to be spent locally, and, you know, it's, it's no different than putting on a concert or a production, it's just a much, on a much bigger scale. I, I don't know what we could do to bond or sure, but there's not going to be a lot of vendors left, you know, holding the bag. And I think my record and Champ Car's record, you know, personal record, et cetera, is I've never left a bill unpaid, so...
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate that, and I've gotten a lot of emails from people around the country who have attended some of your, your events that you've had and have gotten some great responses. But at the end of the day, again, Dr. Selby, I guess my question is, are we putting some assurances in place, because, you know, we are responsible to our taxpayers and we are responsible for our own gatekeeping, if you will?
Yes, sir, Councilman. Although we don't have a bond, they do have an obligation under the contract to basically pay all their bills to defend and indemnify the city from any claims for those kinds of payments.
I can appreciate that.
We will also have contracts with all the local vendors that hold everybody harmless as well.
Thank you very much. And my last question is, are we going to get a show out of Cedric the Entertainer during this weekend?
Actually, Cedric, Cedric has accepted to be on our board, so I'm sure we will, he will be entertaining.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Proton.
Which one of you has something to do with the Phoenix Suns? I just want to congratulate you, you've got one of the best basketball players ever come out of the city of Las Vegas. Congratulate you, I, I look forward to watching.
Marcus? Marcus is your son.
Yeah, I would look forward to being able to watch the Phoenix Suns. I've always been kind of a Detroit Piston fan, I'll tell you what, because of Shawn Marion and Marcus Banks, you've got a new fan.
Right, thank you, thank you.
So we can put you down for the season tickets?
Councilor Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's an exciting city that we live in, and these are exciting times, and I think we all recognize the, the shot and injection into the vitality of downtown Las Vegas, and that's what this council's been working on for quite some time, very important. But I also see other benefits, just the tax revenue benefits alone, the 1,000-plus jobs that will be created from this type of event over the next five years, the worldwide publicity that the city of Las Vegas will receive because of this event. This puts us beyond parallel with other, other international destinations throughout this world, and I commend you gentlemen on bringing this to us and giving us the opportunity to have this in our great city.
What, what's great, within a period of 60 days, we're going to have one-two punch, second to none, really, we're going to have the NBA All-Star Game around February the 15th of next year.
I can't watch that, though.
Excuse me?
I can't watch that, except for...
Oh, right, well, you're not allowed to go, that's correct, right. You can watch it on TV, right, right. Then we're going to have this, we'll have the race shortly thereafter, so it's going to be, it's a good time for the folks who live in Las Vegas.
And Mayor, I might add one other point. I watched an interest with your redevelopment area, and, and that's the very same thing we're doing in Phoenix, and I'm, it echoes exactly our findings and everything else, and I applaud you for that and for, but one of the things I wanted to point out is, this race, Champ Car race in Long Beach, is credited with single-handedly redeveloping that area down by the Wharf, and their mayor and council will sing the praises of this type of, of a festival to help energize that thing, and I think you might be surprised at the end of the day here in a couple of years, how things may actually accelerate as far as the pace that you anticipated, so...
Well, I spoke to Mayor O'Neill, and she advised me that it had a terrific effect upon her downtown, no question about it.
So we look forward to this very much and, and we're excited to be considered to be able to do it.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Council, on behalf of the series, we're very excited to have the opportunity to be able to come to one of the greatest cities in the world. We're going to bring our opening race here to Las Vegas, and it's always special when you're the opening race because everybody in our sport is, is a type A personality with ADD, so when, when the race, our season-ending race ends in Mexico City in front of close to 300,000 people on November 4th, November 5th, they start working on next year and start promoting it, and it's in everybody's marketing plans, and everybody puts all their emphasis in that first race to really kick off the season well. So we're going to bring you a great show, we're going to make you very proud of us, and you will not just see us once a year, we'll have a presence in Las Vegas throughout the year. We have a number of our drivers that live in Las Vegas, so they'll be easy to use for promotions, be able to really get involved with the schools, it's very important for us where we bring cars, because we know not everybody's privileged to be able to come to the Grand Prix, so we take it to them. So it's very important to us, but being the inaugural and the opening race of the season will, will really catapult it to one of the, I think, a very world-class activity.
Okay, I hope the 1,800,000 people who live in this valley here are all touched positively by this experience.
Your Honor, one more comment.
Certainly.
Would you gentlemen consider putting the mayor in the pace car?
I think I'd rather go to the moon.
Before this goes to vote, the entire group wants to thank the mayor, the entire city council, Dr. Selby, the entire staff, including especially Scott and Adam sitting in the second row, and we also wish to express our condolences and sympathies to Councilman Ross, and we wanted to express that before this went to vote.
We appreciate that, thank you very much, thank you. Oh, Councilman Weekly.
Yes, thank you very much, Your Honor. I'd also like to put on the record, I spoke with Councilwoman's staff, and she wanted to express her excitement and support about this, for this event as well, and I'm sure to all the race car enthusiasts out there who are looking forward to this, '07 is going to be an exciting time for us, and it's going to be a fun year, and looking forward to participating in this. With that, Your Honor, we'd like to move for approval without conditions, please.
Thank you, let's vote, please. Close. Adenamis?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries, good luck to you gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to item 56. Item 56 is... We're pulling it forward, by the way, to be heard before item 49. So I'll call item 56, which is, "R 54-2006, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Resolution Finding that the Proposed Sale to Cox Communications Las Vegas Inc. of the property located in the Las Vegas Enterprise Park is in the best interest of the public." This is in Ward 5. Is it suggested that I read the next item, 49, at the same time?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, item 49 is "Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Purchase and Sale Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas and Cox Communications Las Vegas Inc. for the Sale and Development of Three Parcels Totalling Approximately 7.69 Acres at the Intersection of Stella Lake Street and Wheeler Peak Drive in the Las Vegas Enterprise Park." This is in Ward 5. Stradus.
Good morning, Scott Adams with the Office of Business Development. These are two companion items respecting Cox Communications' intent to acquire the VA Building and mancate its regional headquarters. The first item is a resolution that is now required under the new state law, AB 312, that, that requires us to make a finding, an economic development finding, for an exemption of the sale at less than fair market value. The second item is the actual approval of a purchase and a sale agreement of conveyance of the property to Cox Communications for that facility. On the first item, because this is a resolution of finding, I think it's very important that I read into the record certain characteristics and findings about this project that will be important in the record from this point forward. Under this project, and this, this is a very, very straightforward resolution that simply makes a finding that because we're selling this for less than fair market value, the property's involved in this transaction, that for economic development purposes or reasons, we're, we're making a finding of an exception under this AB 312 requirement. And so the findings are that the city is selling three parcels totaling 7.69 acres located adjacent to the former VA Building, and the value of those three parcels collectively are friendly at $20,000, and we're selling this to a dollar, for a dollar, to Cox Communications Las Vegas. Cox must close precedent to that transaction or the actual conveyance, Cox must close on the purchase of the former VA Clinic, so that they actually make the commitment to purchase the building and establish their headquarters. The former VA Clinic will become the new Cox Regional Headquarters, and under the agreement, Cox would house 900 full-time jobs in that facility when they opened, and there's the projection by Cox that this facility could grow to over 1,100 full-time jobs over the next five years. The average in-place salary in the facility we expect to be somewhere in the range of $40,000 a year, and that their total base annual payroll would be $36 million. So those findings are important to really denote the economic impact that this project will have in a particular location. The vacant parcels that were conveyed to Cox are integral to their plans to make the VA Building a regional headquarters in that they are, will be in bad-mate of parking, their current facility doesn't have enough parking, and these parcels will be used integrally as part of their regional headquarters complex to supply the necessary parking they need to operate at that location. This facility will retain approximately 600, 760 jobs in the city, they have a presence in the city now, so we're keeping those jobs in the city, and correspondingly, it will bring about 140 new jobs into the city of Las Vegas from other locations. And we believe in this finding that the employment base that will occur at this location will have a significant positive impact on the commercial development, not only the immediate facility but the surrounding area to include all that of, of Enterprise Park. So those are the findings that I think are important to read into the record at this point before you approve the resolution. As I've stated, the resolution is very straightforward and, and staff does recommend approval.
All right, very good. Is there any, are there any questions of Mr. Adams concerning the resolution? I think it is pretty straightforward, and I am going to let Councilman Weekly carry the ball on this because this is a time for celebration of a success in an area that he has so diligently and fervently tried to promote, protect, and make into his vision what, what should be over in the historic West Side. So, Councilman, why don't you make, why don't you make a motion on that as far as the resolution, and then we'll call Mr. Shore up and have him tell us his plans on item number 49.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Your Honor. And I just want to say on the record, you know, we've worked so very hard for the last three and a half, four years, if you will, trying to secure a positive tenant for this vacant building that has sat dormant, you know, for such a long time, and Mayor Proton, Reese and I sit on the Southern Nevada Health District Board, and I know we've been working with, with our executive director there at the Health District and working with the county and trying to find another location for the, for the Health District because we've outgrown that facility, and we were looking at this particular site, and we heard through the grapevine, someone has it in escrow, and we were trying to go behind the scenes to find out who it was who had this building locked down because we wanted them to go away, because we, we wanted the Health District to go into this building, and lo and behold, you know, when we found out who it was, we were very, very excited because, you know, this company is just not only a local community hero, but they're, they're known across the country and providing a great service, and, you know, for Mayor Goodman to, you know, one of the things, I guess it was a part of his past and keeping good secrets, but when he was told about this as well, I mean, we all struggled with trying to hold this very close to our chest because we were so excited, we wanted to talk about it, but I'm very excited about welcoming Cox, Cox's headquarters to this corner and just what it's going to do as far as breathing life and bringing people and employment opportunities to this corner. It is, Mayor, a celebration, and I want to thank you and members of this council who have been very, very supportive in trying to make this happen. It's not as easy as it looks, people believe that there is a magic wand here, that you can wave a wand and miracles will happen, but it takes a lot of work, and so, Mr. Adams, thank you very much for all of the due diligence you and your staff have given, you know, to this, you know, we've worked with the previous owners of this building, we've driven them crazy every week. You have any words yet, you have anything yet? So finally, we're able to deliver. And so with that, Mayor, I am very proud to move, follow staff's recommendation for approval, and thank you all once again.
Very good, let's vote on 56, please. Close. Motion carries, thank you. Item 49.
Yes, on item number 49, this is the item that actually approves the agreement with Cox for the conveyance of the parcels and, and respects how that works, but I distributed to you prior to today's meeting some changes that we need to make to that agreement. Cox's attorneys are in Atlanta, and we got these changes and dis- an area that he has so diligently and fervently, uh, tried to promote, protect, and, uh, make into, uh, his vision of what, what should be, uh, over in the historic West Side. So, um, Councilman, why don't you make, uh, why don't you, uh, make a motion on that as far as the resolution, and then we'll call Mr. Shore up and have him tell us, uh, his plans on item number forty-nine.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Your Honor. Um, you know, I just want to say on the record, you know, we've worked, um, so very hard for the last three and a half, four years, if you will, trying to secure a positive tenant, um, for this vacant building that has sat dormant, you know, for such a long time, and Mayor Potam Reese and I sit on the, um, Southern Nevada Health District Board, and I know we've been working with, um, with, um, our executive director there at the Health District and working with the county and trying to find another location for the, uh, for the Health District because we've outgrown that facility, and we were looking at this particular site, and we heard through the grapevine, someone has it in escrow, and we were trying to go behind the scenes to find out who it was who had this building locked down because we wanted them to go away, because we, we wanted the Health District to go into this building, and lo and behold, um, you know, when we found out who it was, we were very, very excited, uh, because, um, you know, this company is just not only, um, a local community hero, but, um, they're, they're known across the country and providing a great service, and, you know, for Mayor Goodman to, you know, one of the things, I guess it was a part of his past and keeping good secrets, but when he was told about this as well, I mean, we all struggled with, um, trying to hold this very close to our chest because we were so excited, we wanted to talk about it, but I'm very excited about, um, welcoming Cox, um, Cox's headquarters, um, to this corner and just what it's going to do as far as breathing life and bringing people and employment opportunities, um, to this corner. Um, it is, Mayor, a celebration, and I want to thank you and members of this council who have been very, very supportive in trying to make this happen. Um, it's not as easy as it looks. People believe that there's a magic wand here, that you can wa, wave a wand and miracles will happen, but it takes a lot of work, and so, uh, Mr. Adams, thank you very much, um, for all of the due diligence you and your staff have given, you know, to this. You know, we've worked with, um, the previous owners of this building, um, we've driven them crazy every week. You have any words yet? You have anything yet? And so finally, we're able to, um, deliver. And so with that, Mayor, I am very proud to, um, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, and thank you all once again.
Very good. Let's vote on fifty-six, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fif, uh, forty-nine.
Yes, uh, on item number forty-nine, this is the item that actually approves the agreement with Cox for the conveyance of the parcels and, and respects how that works, but, um, I distributed to you prior to today's meeting some changes that we need to make to that agreement. Uh, Cox's attorneys are in Atlanta, and we got these changes and discussed these last minute, and I have to read these into the record. I will give, uh, a copy of this to the clerk, so to be sure they're in the record, um, and bear with me, there's, uh, some of these are somewhat wordy, and I'll try to get through them as quickly as I can, but, um, the first change is that the corporate name of Cox should be Cox Communications Las Vegas, Inc. The second change is that on page, on section twenty-four, page fourteen, we're gonna add text notwithstanding the lien provision set forth in twenty-five. On section twenty-five, page fourteen, we'll add the language, and such violation continues for a period of 180 days following developers receive a written notice of the right from the city. This fourth change is on section twenty-five, page fifteen, add an earlier of five, and then also add the text, "Or December 1, 2011, unless the city shall have filed written notice of each violation of real property records of Clark County, Nevada. In the event that the city shall have filed such written notice of violation of real property records of Clark County, Nevada, such claim shall continue until such violation identified in such recorded notice, violation now resists," and then we'll delete language from that same sentence, "Five years for all includes of escrow of developers not violated any provisions of this agreement, otherwise remain in full force and effect till satisfied." We're also adding, um, changes to Cox's corporate address, sixty-two oh five Peachtree, Dandy Road in Atlanta, and adding a carbon copy to their attorney's dioramas, PILC, Sixth Concourse Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia, and then finally Exhibit D, line eight, we're adding language, "Or December 1, 2011." The effect of these changes, and I have to give credit to Cox, is they're taking very seriously their jobs commitment at this location, and they understand under this agreement, one of the primary provisions of the agreement is what in the economic development field we call a clawback provision. We have a lien set up, and a memorandum will be recorded for a period of five years that should Cox, um, try to sell this building, or, or these properties, I'm sorry, and, and I've got on the overhead, uh, an aerial of this site, and I'm pointing to the VA Building, and then I'm pointing to the three parcels that we would be conveying from city ownership in Enterprise Park to Cox. Should they attempt in five years to sell this, um, to, to anybody for use other than a regional headquarters of themselves or an affiliate, now, I mean, it's okay if they sell to Time Warner and, and they keep it as a regional headquarters, but should they sell to anybody else for anything else, in essence, try to flip our land for speculation. Um, there's a recorded memorandum, and within that five-year period, they would have to pay us the fair market value of these properties. So that, that's what in economic development politics is called a clawback. We make sure that they are the only recipients of the economic development benefit of the incentive during that five-year period. They've taken that very seriously, so the changes we just made to the agreement give them 180 days to cure any default under that provision, and one of those is should their jobs go below 900. Um, and they would need 180 days to bring jobs from other locations into the facility so that they can maintain that jobs commitment at that location. So I wanted to point out why that change was made, and it's something that we worked, uh, out with Cox over, over the, uh, the last, uh, several days. Um, that, that really is, the, the agreement essentially conveys these properties to Cox for dollar. Uh, we look at this as an economic development incentive. If you divide the number of jobs here into the dollar value, the $4,020,000 value of these parcels, you get about $4,500 a job as an incentive, and if you compare that to incentive-based deals around the United States, it is a very, very low dollar per job incentive to keep and attract jobs at, at this location.
Your Honor, before you go on, Mr. Adams, when we go into negotiations with, with community partners, and this has nothing to do with Cox Communications, and when you say a prospective community partner will have to buy a specific parcel back from the city or pay us fair market value, is it clear fair market value today or in five years?
Yes. We specified in the agreement that the, the value is $4,020,000. I mean, we, we, in fact, one of the things that's required now under state law, because of the AB-312 resolution, we have to get now recent appraisals that are within six months, and it's fix and establish by resolution what the value of the property is.
And that was more my concern globally, not just specifically, but in, in future negotiations. Thank you.
And, and, um, so the other feature of the, um, I, I, I was talking about the incentives. We really look at this as an incentive to, to retain and attract jobs in the Enterprise Park in this community. Um, one of the other features of the agreement is that they have to close on their property before we actually convey, and we, we believe that they're closing on that property, acquiring it, making that $16 million investment creates the good faith that we believe is necessary to establish this location for their regional headquarters. We wouldn't just give them the property and then hope they make their regional headquarters there. We want to see them actually close on the property. Um, those are, those are the primary terms of the, the agreement. Now, historically, in Enterprise Park, we have sold at then fair market value about half the properties that you have seen projects built on within Enterprise Park, and we've donated about half the properties that you've seen projects on in Enterprise Park. Um, they range everywhere from, you know, McDonald's to RLT Corporation to the FBI headquarters, and on and on and on. We've had, uh, roughly about a dozen transactions in Enterprise Park since its inception, and roughly about half of those have been donated, uh, sales, and about half of those have been sold for then fair market value. So I wanted to establish that for the record as well, and it becomes a project-by-project determination as to which ones we believe should be conveyed at some less-than fair market value, which ones can withstand the, um, uh, fair market value determination. In this case, I will say, um, establishing a regional headquarters of this magnitude is a very, very significant thing at this location, and certainly warrants the application of incentives in a project like this. With all those findings and all those, uh, statements made, um, the agreement is in order with those changes, as I read into the record, and staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you very much. I, um, I guess, um, was taught, or just, um, by osmosis, learned that the, the role of the city is substantially different than that of, uh, somebody in the private sector. Our job is to create common good, a benefit to our community, and the, um, the cost of that is, uh, not the paramount issue, but the end result is what we as a council look for. Um, we're getting an awful lot in return for what we're giving, as, um, was indicated by you, Mr. Adams, we have the regional center of a major Fortune 500 company in an area that needs to have this kind of economic boost. I believe that, um, with the 900 to 1,100 folks who will be working there, that Councilman Weekly's dream of, uh, a first-class supermarket, uh, is much closer to reality than ever before. This develops a critical mass, uh, together with the other, uh, businesses that are there, including the FBI Building, which will be housing, uh, many people, uh, who will be living in the area and driving to work and wanting to participate in the community's activities. This is a no-brainer for me. I, uh, I, I think this is just the right thing to do. I think, uh, Mr. Shore yesterday, you know, used that phrase, "It's the right thing," time and time again when we had our, uh, I guess, uh, groundbreaking in effect for the building. So this, this isn't even close. This is a, a great thing. This, uh, this doesn't give me one moment of, uh, uh, concern that the city is doing the right thing here, and, um, it's not as though, uh, Mr. Shore and Cox are coming in without making an investment. How much are you paying for the property?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Steve Shore, Vice President, Cox Communications. Uh, let me first say that we did close on that building, uh, on the sale last Friday.
Great.
We go Friday.
How much did you pay for it?
We paid $16 million, but, but in essence, Mayor, that's just the beginning. I will unveil for the first time today that, uh, our total investment will be nearly double that in what we're going to invest inside the building to renovate it and to put in a new place that we can house upwards of 1,100 employees.
So if my math is correct, you're talking about a $50 million investment?
That's correct.
Okay, let's hear your, your plans, because I'm, I'm almost as excited as Councilman Weekly.
Well, I will, I will tell you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that, that this decision on our part, um, and needless to say, there were other parts of Southern Nevada that wanted us to move our headquarters to their community, um, but this decision was not as difficult as one might think. Uh, we have long had a relationship with this community. Our partnership that we have viewed with all of the franchising authorities in Southern Nevada is something we relish, uh, something that often does not happen in our world of cable television. And, Mr. Mayor, you're a, a wonderful member of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. You know from some of your other counterparts, the relationship with, with companies, telecommunications companies, often is not the best that it can be. We're proud of our relationship with our local franchising authorities, and especially with the city. Um, I will tell you that the discussions that have taken place between myself and Councilman Weekly, uh, and yourself, uh, along with, uh, Councilman Reese, about your vision of this community was something that sparked us as a company, something that we saw as important. When we built our structure at Rancho and Bonanza, we knew it was the right thing for us, for a lot of reasons. Easy on and off of the highway, which is a little bit more difficult today, but it will again be wonderful. Uh, we believed it was the right thing for our customers and our employees. Probably the one part of that that we did not realize was the impact it would have on the local community. New businesses going in. Uh, I, I, I would have some pride to watch the Wells Fargo Bank across the street get a brand, brand-new facelift, and I don't know if that would have ever taken place. I think that community, in talking to the residents in the community that I often do, uh, there's a different vision, there's a different belief of their neighborhood. It, it's not seen as a decaying neighborhood. It's seeing as, seen as a neighborhood that has new life. We believe that our moving our headquarters, our regional headquarters, to this location, we pray will do the same thing. Uh, we have long-term partnerships. I'm very proud to say as a company that we reinvest upwards of $1.6 million a year to this community, uh, money that we donate cash and in kind to more than 100 local community and civic organizations. That's something we don't take lightly. Uh, we have strong partnerships that we're very proud of. Um, I was, um, just the other, a couple of weeks ago, at the groundbreaking for the Doc Pearson Community Center. Uh, we're gonna donate our technology, we're not gonna take a penny from them because we believe it's the right thing to do. Down the street is the Urban, uh, Urban League and Urban Chamber of Commerce, new headquarters. We are the technology partner, we're giving them the technology. Our belief is that in order to become a partner with the community, you can't just say it, you have to do it. Um, this property will allow us to do some things within the community. I have made a commitment, uh, to Councilman, uh, Weekly, that we will be involved whenever he has job fairs. We want to pull from that community, we want to be part of that community. I, I'm sorry, I, I've been in the technology business for a long time, I'm, I have been in communications for better than 35 years now, and I will tell you, technology is the future, and the more young people, the more people we can get involved in technology, the better our community's going to be, and we're gonna take a very proactive stance to get the community involved, offer people jobs, give them jobs. We're not a low-paying company. Uh, as, as you heard, uh, we're not afraid, we're not a, we're not a minimum wage company. We give people good salaries and incredible benefits. Every one of our employees, we pay for their medical insurance, every one of our employees, and we're proud of that. We're not a company, we're a company that has a family name in front of it. The Cox family is, is an organization and a, and a family that takes great pride in who they are, as we take pride in what we are. We're going to change this neighborhood, we're going to provide jobs, uh, we're gonna open with 900. I, I, there's no way that we'll wait five years to get to 1,100, in just in seeing what we're doing now. One of the things I did not unveil yesterday is we're going to move our business section of our community, of our, of our company, uh, from another community where they're now located, to this building, because we think it's the right thing to do. Um, I would, I would, I will commit to you that our partnership with the city in, in this neighborhood and in this community will be something that you'll be proud of. Uh, we've already had discussions with all the businesses in the area, uh, our employees will have to eat someplace, drink someplace, uh, relax someplace, it'll be in that neighborhood. And my prayer, yeah, as the councilman, is that we will have a major supermarket where our people can shop on their way home. I also hope that there, it will spark new development, new rooftops, because our people hopefully will want to live where they work, and that's the best thing that can happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I agree with everything you said. Councilman Weekly?
Thank you again, Mr. Shore, and thank everyone from Cox out for all the support, and again, thank you, Mayor, very much, um, for, um, helping me through this entire process. Um, it's been a long time coming, and we're very excited, and we welcome you all to the neighborhood. So with that, I'd like to follow staff's recommendation.
Councilman, can I say one more thing? I know that, uh, that some residents that are to the west of these, uh, land, uh, these parcels have some concerns. We have agreed, uh, with the city, uh, to do some, uh, some space planning there, along with landscaping, uh, between those residents, so they will not be hampered by what, the cars that are going to be there. We want to be a good neighbor, we don't want people not to be happy that we're there.
And I think that brings a lot of comfort to them, and I appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to move for approval without conditions, please.
Very good. Let's vote, please.
As amended. Thank you.
Post, please. Motion carries, and good luck to you. Okay, very nice. Item fifty is Discussion and Possible Action on Appeal of Work Card Denial, approved January 18th, 2006, subject to a six-month review for Gail M. Gonzalez. Sergeant? Ms. Gonzalez here?
I hope so. I spoke to her personally.
Ms. Gonzalez, are you with us? Doesn't appear to be sergeant. Does that affect what we're gonna do today?
It should, it, I'll let you make that decision.
Okay.
Just, just a second.
Sergeant Reagan Alexander with, um, Metro Special Investigation Section. Uh, Mayor, Council, this is a six-month review, we're looking at, council granted a temporary, uh, work card to Gail Gonzalez. The report I've, I've submitted to you all. Um, also, as a courtesy, uh, you guys should have, uh, a letter, a current letter from her employer. Uh, I was hoping that Gail would be bringing that herself, but, uh, there, there is a copy in your backup from her employer, Mr. Wiggins. Um, the results of the review, she's still employed, uh, she's in good standing, there's been no further, um, incidences regarding, uh, criminal history.
Very good. That's what we like to hear. All right. Are there any, uh, questions of the sergeant? Or have a motion, please?
I always wished that they was here, uh, so they could answer any questions, if any other councilmembers had any questions, uh, but she's not here.
Mayor Potam, I can...
No, I, I will certainly, uh, you know, follow your recommendation. I just hope that, uh, she knows how much we appreciate, uh, her staying in good standing, uh, you know, at her location, and I would move to give them, uh, give her a permanent license, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is item fifty-one, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Temporary Approval of a New Beer Wine Cooler On-Sale License Subject to the Provisions of the Fire and Planning Codes and Health Department Regulations for Grand Market Cafe at 495 South Grand Central Parkway. This is in Ward Five. Mr. DeFiori?
Mayor, members of the council, uh, today the applicant does meet the prerequisite for consideration of temporary approval of this beer wine cooler on-sale license, and my recommendations would be, uh, to, uh, recommend that temporary approval, subject to the conditions that are included.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. DeFiori? Gentlemen, would you like to be heard?
Uh, Mayor and the councilman would just, no, we'd just like to be here, we just want to say thank you so much for all the help, and also all the help that Councilman Weekly...
I get it.
I'm sorry.
You have to give us your name, please.
Oh, my name is Arturo Vare, 7660 Men of War, Northwest Las Vegas. I just want to say thank you very much to Councilman Weekly for... to say thank you very much to Councilman Weekly for support and help, and also those who got us along and held our hand to get to this point because we never knew what we were going to go through, but we really appreciate all the help that's been helped through this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about your partner?
Thank you also. I'm Paul Panetta, owner and partner of Grand Market Cafe.
Thank you. Nice having you gentlemen here. All right, this is Councilman Weekly's motion.
Yes, your honor, I would like to move for approval with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Jim.
Item fifty-three is discussion on possible action regarding temporary approval of change of ownership for a beer wine cooler on-sale license from Lintac LLC, doing business as Buckingham Smokehouse Barbecue, to Buckingham Smokehouse Barbecue. This is in Ward six. Mr. DiFiori.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to make a correction to the agenda item. Unfortunately, we forgot to put in the address here, and I'll read that into the record.
Okay.
The address being twenty-three forty-one North Rainbow, Suite Number One Hundred.
Okay.
And the applicant does today meet the prerequisites for consideration of temporary approval, and that would be my recommendation with all conditions included.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Your name, please?
Yes, my name is Mark Leeds. I reside at thirty-two forty Strada Olivero here in Las Vegas, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your consideration for this transfer of license.
Is this a new business?
No, it's an existing business.
Okay.
And we provide the best barbecue in Las Vegas. You're all welcome to come down and try it.
What's your specialty?
All kinds of smoked meats.
Do you have a specialty amongst the smoked meats?
Yes, the pork. The pork is an excellent sandwich.
I don't eat pork. Okay.
All right, we have beef brisket and we have chicken.
I love beef brisket. Thank you very much.
You're welcome to come down, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Leeds or Mr. DiFiori? Okay, this is Councilman Ross.
Thank you, your honor. I move to approve, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Item fifty-four is discussion on possible action regarding a six-month review of a massage establishment license for Jade Garden Massage at sixty-seven oh-six West Cheyenne Avenue. Mr. DiFiori.
Mayor, members of the council, this six-month review comes with a little bit of a change that is occurring in the business operation. The applicant today was conditioned for approval of a temporary license roughly around six months ago with conditions that the prior owners would not be involved or be allowed on the premises of the business. You'll see in your backup report that there have been no areas of concern on the conditions that were imposed or the activity occurring. However, the business is now being sold to another party and is currently under investigation for consideration of that license at a future date by the council. My recommendation today is to extend the temporary license with the conditions and allow the investigation on the new owner to come to a conclusion, and that will be coming before the city council at some point in time.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions to Mr. DiFiori? All right, folks, would you identify yourself, please?
I'm the interpreter.
And your name, sir?
Alex Young.
Right, and the young lady?
Year Dai.
Year Dai.
Okay, did she understand what Mr. DiFiori was saying?
Yes.
All right, very good. Are there any questions of any of these folks? All right, Councilman Ross?
Thank you, your honor. Mr. DiFiori, this extension of temporary license will be how long?
It'll be a six-month extension of the temporary license.
An additional six months. Any thoughts from Metro and concerns at this time?
Thank you. No, not at this time. We're still going through the investigation, and our detective's going to need about another, we'll be done with it well before the six months, but we just need to finish the investigation on the spouse and do some other things. We should bring it back before you within about sixty days.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor, for allowing him to answer my question. I'm just concerned with these type of establishments that have alleged improprieties in their past, that we keep our eyes focused on them in the future to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods there in the northwest. So with that, your honor, I move to approve, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you. Before we vote, just a question of interest to me. There are many Asians, apparently, who are coming before us with the massage licenses, and I get the impression that many of the folks who are working in these establishments do not speak English, or at least to a sufficient nature that they do not need an interpreter. How does the business work under that circumstance?
In many cases, the establishment does have a massage therapist or an employee that does speak English and does speak Chinese and is able to translate that. We find that it is very difficult at times, especially with owners that don't have a good capture of the English language, but usually, in most cases, there is somebody on the premises that is able to interpret or speak English to customers coming in.
All right, thank you. All right, there's been a motion. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you. All right, item fifty-five is discussion on possible action regarding a new massage establishment license, subject to the provisions of the Planning Codes. Kristen Williams, doing business as M. Power, twelve fifteen Las Vegas Boulevard, in Ward three. Mr. DiFiori.
Mayor, members of the council, having heard the concerns of the council at last week's meeting, my recommendation today would be to approve or recommend approval of a temporary license for six months for Ms. Williams, and with two conditions, that no guests be escorted from the hotel room to the massage establishment, and secondly, that there will be no in-room massage. The six-month review would be recommended that it would be a six-month review from the date of the opening of the business.
All right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. DiFiori?
Mr. DiFiori, if I could throw you to Ms. Williams, how are you going to operate this? I mean, are you going to have, I know it's in a hotel. I certainly appreciate, you know, you're expanding the location, working with staff on the concerns that I had. Are you going to be operating this yourself? Are you going to be operating twenty-four hours a day, or?
No, our hours of operation at this point are from eight to five. We may want to extend those hours from eight to eight, where the last massage would be performed at seven P.M., but nothing later than that.
Would you agree then to a condition on the temporary license then, from eight to five?
Yeah.
Is Mr. Dushov getting a massage now?
Not that I know of.
Where is he?
I think he's in court.
Okay, just one more.
I did talk to Mr. Dushov this morning, and I explained to him, and I think he's well-represented his client. I think he's done a great job for you in that regard, so...
Very good.
I would, if there's no other questions, I would move to follow his staff's recommendation with the conditions added, that there will be no escort from the rooms, and there will be no massage in the room, and the hours will be from eight to five on the temporary license.
All right, that's a vote, that's a motion. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you for working with us and doing those things we have. I appreciate it. Good luck.
Item fifty, we did fifty-six.
Yep.
Okay, fifty-seven is bill number two thousand and six dash thirty-seven, prohibiting within city parks the providing of food or meals as would typically be provided in a rescue mission or shelter for the homeless. Mr. Jerwick, would you please read this bill?
I'll be up to your honor, bill number twenty-six dash thirty-seven, orders to prohibit certain types of food distribution when the city parks and provide for other related matters. Your honor, this is a First Amendment that is up for consideration before the council today. If I could briefly read into the record the new subsection six that should be in your backup. If it's not, let me put this in the record now. These are the following things that are prohibited in city parks, and number six now becomes the providing of food or meals to the indigent for free or for a nominal fee, period. For purposes of this paragraph, an indigent person is a person whom a reasonably ordinary person would believe is entitled to apply for service or receive assistance under NRS Chapter four twenty-eight. That is the new language that replaces the former language in subsection six. If I could, your honor, I want to make a bit of a record on this bill and then answer any questions that the council has today.
Certainly.
On June twenty-sixth, two thousand and six, this council heard item number seventy-seven with respect to problems at Circle Park, and a number of people testified before the council. The, I would like at this point in time to incorporate by reference that transcript into this record as backup and some evidence to support why we're doing what we're doing today, or asking the council to do what we're doing today. In particular, I'm reading from a draft of that transcript, the testimony of Dwayne Sonnenberg, and if I could just read this into the record briefly, I think that one of the things that we need to establish is the fact that this is not going to prohibit a single homeless person from obtaining a meal in this town. There was ample record made at that time that between the various shelters in town and the kitchens, that we're not only able to provide meals to anybody who wants one, but there's a harmful effect from providing them at other places. Mr. Sonnenberg states on the record, and I'm quoting now, "I'm Dwayne Sonnenberg. Currently, I'm the director of grants and special projects, period. For the last nineteen years, I've worked with the Salvation Army, primarily with homeless population. Both Salvation Army and Catholic Charities, Las Vegas Rescue Mission, Lutheran Social Services have all significant effort going into providing food, not only for housed families through our family services, but particularly for the homeless. We feed over a thousand meals a day at the Salvation Army. Probably four hundred of those go directly to homeless individuals in the afternoon. Catholic Charities will do the same thing. In the morning, a meal, and the Las Vegas Rescue Mission will do the same thing in the evening. Both Catholic Charities and the Salvation Army have recently built new state-of-the-art kitchens. We could easily triple our capacity on our campus with the new facility, not only in the preparation of meals, but also in the feeding of individuals using our dining facilities in, you know, just a sequential manner. So we have no problem with significant increases in our ability to meet the need of feeding homeless people. In the past, we have invited community individuals and other faith-based groups if they want to come and feed onto our property." And then he goes on to talk about the harms that occurred in his observation of a feeding that occurred across the street from these social services. "We had a number who would feed over on Stalker across the street, and the result was, or several results, was one, when they showed up, it was very dangerous crossing the street because those individuals who saw the food wanted to be first in line, and without regard to traffic or safety, immediately charged across the street. After they fed the homeless, there was a significant amount of debris and residue left that cluttered up the neighborhood, and they did not have adequate trash bags or trash cans to collect the food. Oftentimes, they were in styrofoam containers, so the people would walk down the street, eating as they walk, and unfortunately, wherever they stopped, the container was left." Then he goes on to talk about parks in general, and after observing some of the health issues and debris issues associated with feeding people not in association with a shelter, says those feedings in parks and on the street, from my perspective, are more problematic than they are helpful. The, your honor, we had a number of individuals who testified on June twenty-first regarding the conditions at Circle Park, where there have been efforts to feed homeless people outside the shelters and outside of any kind of organized structure. We've had testimony that there was not only debris left behind, but the homeless population itself is being displaced from where service providers can assist them with shelter, medical, and other needs, to an area where none of those services are available. They're left behind without transportation, and as a result, they end up in neighborhoods, not only leaving debris behind, but sometimes sleeping on people's yards, sometimes defecating, urinating on people's yards, and we've also seen a spike in crime when that park was opened after it had been closed for renovation. You can draw whatever conclusion you want to from that. Based on those, that testimony and those facts, we were asked to craft some solutions. This is one of several ordinances that will be coming before the council. With that, your honor, I don't have anything else to add to the record, and I'll be glad to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
I want to thank, personally thank the mayor, and especially Brad Jerwick, for crafting this bill for the city. I've been representing Circle Park for many, many years. We really tried to be very proactive at this location in making a park that the neighbors can bring their kids, their children, to play and participate. I finally, I've reached my wit's end, and I invited the mayor to one of my neighborhood meetings, and you can see where it went from there. And I think, Mayor, that the people that live in this area really owe you a debt of gratitude because without you, without your leadership, without your tenacity, we wouldn't be here where we're at today. And I just appreciate what you've done for my ward.
I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Basically, we are, we are in the process of considering ordinances which will address these issues to make neighborhoods safe, to preserve quality of life. This particular ordinance, though, I think is in the best interest of the homeless, particularly the indigent homeless who really need to be given guidance and counseling and to get themselves transitioned back into a meaningful, worthwhile, productive life, and that can only take place with the expertise of social workers, of psychologists, people who know how to relate to them, and by having the homeless get their meals in a location such as the Salvation Army or the Shade Tree or Catholic Charities provides the opportunity where those folks can receive those services. So I have no question we're doing the right thing as far as this particular ordinance is concerned. So with that, I'll move for its adoption.
As First Amendment, your honor.
As First Amendment. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Items fifty-eight through sixty-nine, bills two thousand and six dash thirty-one through two thousand and six dash thirty-six, two thousand and six dash thirty-eight, Z two thousand and six dash one, Z two thousand and six dash two, and bills two thousand and six dash thirty-nine through two thousand and six dash forty-one are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. There are no new bills, so our city council meeting is in recess, and we'll see you back here for our afternoon session at one P.M. One P.M.
He always has his leatherman on him.
There was another one of these, I think it was on the floor. If you threw it away, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. That was the one.
He always has his leatherman on here. If you threw it away, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. That was the one.
There's another one of these, I think it was on the floor. If you threw it away, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. That was the one.
There's another one of these, I think it was on the floor. If you threw it away, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. That was the one.
Now, do these, they're not at all tied to this, right? Not at all. Turn off the flame, please.
There's another one of these, I think it was on the floor. If you threw it away, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. That was the one.
Now, do these, they're not at all tied to this, right? Not at all. Turn off the flame, please.
Check, check, this is the right podium, right podium, that should be the city handheld, city handheld. Check, check, this is KCLV, left podium, KCLV, left podium.
Okay, folks, good afternoon. We'll wait a little longer for our fellow councilpeople to join us. Councilwoman Tarkanian is excused until she gets here. And I guess we'll call the next item, which will be item number seventy. Before I do that, I want to advise you that we have exits here in case there's any kind of sprinkler issues or the like, we have no reason to believe that there will be, but please familiarize yourself with the exits and should you have to exit, there'll be folks outside there in the rotunda telling you where to exit to. That's just as a precautionary measure and we have, as I say, no reason to suspect or expect anything untoward to happen. Item number seventy is any items from the afternoon session that the council staff, either the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor, we have items number eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, GP-8, one-two, one-two-nine, rezoning, one-two, one-two-seven, and site development review, one-two, one-two-eight, African owner El Capitan MHP LLC, general plan amendment, rezoning and site development plan for a three-hundred-and-forty-eight-unit, four-story condominium development and a waiver of the perimeter landscaping at forty-nine oh-one, East Bonanza Road, the applicants ask for that to be based until August the sixteenth, two thousand and six meeting. Are there any other items to report at this time?
Are you gentlemen standing up regarding items eighty, eighty-two?
Yes, sir.
All right, did you want to be heard?
We wanted just to be obeyed.
No, we understand that you want the abeyance, that's fine. Is there any issue with that?
No.
No, I don't think so, that'd be fine. Very good. And are you also hearing that item?
Yes, sir.
Altogether.
Thank you.
For the record that we have to have your names, would you be kind enough to identify yourselves?
Robert Mann, thirty-seven eighty-five Boulder Highway.
Thank you.
Matthew Jayjack, property manager.
Okay.
Paul Thorick, architect planner.
Very good, and this is going to be obeyed to August the sixteenth.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you then, thank you.
Are there any other items, councilmembers? CNN, I make caution, bring these out and make appropriate action, please.
All right, thanks, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carriers, thank you. Item number seventy-one is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of vacant or abandoned building and assess civil penalties for the property located at thirty-two twenty Mariner Bay Street, the property owners or congregation Ephraim Israel, and this is in Ward Two. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Mr. Harson.
Thank you. Stephen Harson, Director, Neighborhood Services Department. This is a request to recover the cost for abatement and assess civil penalties for the property located at thirty-two twenty Mariner Bay Street. This case has been active since January ninth of two thousand and six, with a total of twenty-two site visits conducted to date. The condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation of the Las Vegas Municipal Code and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken, nor an appeal filed, Neighborhood Services hired CH Construction LLC to remove trash and debris, overgrown vegetation, and posted no trespassing, no dumping, and no vehicle signs. The value of the property, based on the sale date of October two thousand and four, was three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. We just learned that the property owner sold it again, and the property closed escrow on June twenty-eighth of two thousand and six. Given that the original notice and order was recorded on the property, and the purchaser would be aware of the NNO during escrow, Neighborhood Services recommends that the City Council move forward and approve the report of expenses in the amount of five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and thirty-five cents. That's one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars to CH Construction, four-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars in reinspection fees, two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and thirty-five cents in administrative fees, and three-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars in civil penalties for the eight failed inspections. In addition, City Council may assess the daily civil penalty at five-hundred dollars a day for twenty-one days, covering June twenty-eighth through July nineteenth, totaling ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And that the above charges be filed and recorded against the property constituting a special assessment and authorize that the notice of lien and assessment be duly recorded with the county treasurer. In addition, we are recommending that the council order the cost outlined in the report of expenses be imposed as a personal obligation against the congregation Ephraim Israel and/or Claude Guellemet, the previous owners of record, to provide the city with the flexibility of having the city attorney's office attempt to collect this debt as outlined in the code against the previous owners. And this concludes our presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harson. There's a couple of new things, as far as this is concerned, at least to my knowledge, the amount that's being sought is different than the amount which is in the backup material. And also, on the purpose in the background, as noted, and secondly, we're being asked to impose personal liability here, when in fact, it would appear that this is some type of a religious congregation.
I'm looking at the Mac up here right now, Your Honor. Okay, Your Honor, on the June thirtieth, two thousand and six memo from the city clerk, or from Devin Smith to the city clerk, that outlines the potential imposition of civil penalties per day.
Right.
And subsequent, we had this meeting set, or this was set for last meeting, it was stricken, so that we could renotice it properly to address the civil penalty issues.
I see.
So, what Mr. Harson's has done is calculated it in two different factions, obviously, and I don't need to explain that to the council, but, so that takes care of that. As far as the personal obligation, the code does authorize that the council has the authority to make these, instead of a lien, to impose a personal obligation on the property owner or responsible party. In this case, we're asking that the personal obligation be toward the previous owner who basically flipped the property in the middle of us trying to get him to comply, and then record the lien against the property based upon the notice and order that was of record at the recorder's office during this entire transaction, whether the title company missed it, or if they got a waiver from the purchaser, I'm not quite sure, but that's the reason for those two.
All right, well, I appreciate the explanation. I'll be happy to hear from you, sir. Are you representing the congregation Ephraim Israel?
Yes, I was just called today, my name is Jonathan Hanson, I'm an attorney here in town. Apologies for not being in time, I just got called.
No problem.
Fifteen minutes before this occurred. I just got an email from the congregation Ephraim, they indicated that a Ms. Borelli previously owned the property, and that they just got control of it two weeks ago. They have, actually have people out there working on it as we speak to get it into compliance, trying to fix it up, getting the pool repaired, getting the landscaping done, they're putting in zero scapeing to make it so that there's less water consumption. They're attempting to do everything they can to get it into compliance with the code here. However, they obviously don't have a lot of money, they're trying to do what they can, and simply asked for two weeks to get the property in compliance.
Well, basically, the work's already been done, and that's what we're seeking at this point in time.
Well, I don't know all the facts.
No, I appreciate that, but the problem that you're going to have is if we, if anybody were considering to extend it for another two weeks, the civil penalty would keep on accruing, and I'm sure they wouldn't want that, whereas...
What is the total penalty now?
We're talking in terms of fourteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars in civil penalties and a cost...
The abatement itself...
The abatement is fourteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Yeah, the actual abatement, total abatement cost is two-thousand-eleven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Right.
And the fees and penalties to date is three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. So, the grand total of those two is...
Fifty-eight ninety-six.
Exactly.
And that, forgive me, that does not include the potential for the five-hundred-dollar a day for twenty-one days, which is a total of ten-thousand-five-hundred, which would be, if this council chooses, on top of the fifty-nine-hundred.
Yeah, basically, the way this works, Mr. Hanson, is if we take action today and we approve the request of Mr. Harson, Neighborhood Services, there will be a lien that will be imposed upon the property, it's not as though you're going to be asked to pay for it out of somebody's pocket immediately, it's when the property is sold, that we would definitely receive our recompense here.
I understand that, my client just simply asked me to ask for some leniency here, he's out there trying to get everything under control.
Okay, well, that's going to be up to the councilman for the ward as to whether or not he wants to consider that request. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Your last name is Hanson?
Hanson.
Mr. Hanson, it's our understanding that your client has sold the property, your
If, for example, if council came back in two weeks and had a little bit more information, and, and we felt a little bit more comfortable, could we, could we modify that?
Councilman, you, you could, but it would probably be more prudent if you, if you were tempted to do that, is to hold it and see what happens here. I received a phone call from a fellow for the trust, myself, at my desk earlier this week, indicating that the property had been sold to this family trust that Mr. Harson referred to, and that it was purchased from, that, yeah, it was purchased from the congregation Ephraim Israel. So, that, that to me seems very clear. I talked to the trustee himself, and we have a quick claim deed here recorded on June twenty-eighth of this year. So, we could, you certainly have the ability to do that, but I would say it would be probably more prudent to hold it at this point and then make a decision in two weeks, if that was your pleasure, rather than make a decision now and then try to revise it later.
Well, my gut feeling, and I'm just thinking out loud now, is that council, if you weren't here, I would be making a motion right now to ask this council to award the seventeen thousand dollars, which would act as a lien against this property. But, you know, you're an officer of the court, you're coming in before us, and you're saying that, that you have a client that wishes to make this right.
Right.
Now, I will note that, you know, you need to come up to speed with all due respect because...
I apologize for that.
No, it's not your fault. You got a phone call, and you're here, and you're trying to represent a client, and believe me, there's a couple of us on this board that, that have a unique respect for what you're trying to do. But I want you to recognize that the city's been dealing with this issue, and I want to thank Kelly for all your hard work, and Devin, your hard work. This is not something that's just come about in the last month or so. We've been dealing with this property, you know, dating back, how many months, Kelly?
Since January.
Since, since January. And we just learned that this property has been sold, so your client may not even own the property anymore. I'm not sure if you're getting accurate information. So, here's, here's what I'm going to do. One more time. My motion is to continue this matter until our first meeting in August, and I would ask that staff meet with council here, give them all the information, give him and/or his client one last chance to, to make good on this, and to convince us that we shouldn't impose this seventeen thousand dollar lien, because that's where I'm inclined to go in about two weeks. So, my motion is to obey for, for, until the first meeting in August.
August second.
August second.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Better get paid.
I hope so. Thank you very much.
It's the only thing that's on my mind right now. Okay. All right, seventy-two and seventy-three. Seventy-two is SUP one-three-five-three-seven, public hearing. The applicant owner is Rainbow Studios LLC, request for a special use permit for proposed mixed-use development at six-eleven South Tonopah Drive. This is in Ward Five. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, seventy-three is SDR one-three-five-three-four, same applicant, same owner. Request for a site development plan review for proposed mixed-use development consisting of thirty-nine hundred and forty-six square feet of office space and twenty-two residential units on point-six-nine acres at six-eleven South Tonopah Drive. Ward Five, planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions, these are both public hearings, which are now declared open. Is anybody here on behalf of Rainbow Studios LLC? All right, Councilman Weekly, what's your pleasure?
Well, Your Honor, we'd like for the applicant to be here in case we have some questions in reference to this. You want to maybe trail us for about five minutes, and come back to it if...
Be happy to trail.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just let me check once and...
All right, just, if I forget, remind me, okay, please?
Thank you.
Good. All right, seventy-four is SUP one-three-one-six-four. It'll be a public hearing. The applicant is Song Booth Chorn Banj Pichan. The owner is Marion T. and Aristides C. Paris. The request for a special use permit for a proposed second-hand dealer jewelry at nineteen-fifty-four East Charleston Boulevard in Ward Three. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. My name is Patron, and my father is the applicant here, sir.
Nice seeing you again. Okay, be happy to hear from you.
We don't have anything, Your Honor. It's just the planning commission have approved our, our applicant, we're just here for the final approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
No, Your Honor, may, may I comment?
Yes, certainly.
I need, I need to ask a question first.
Okay, please.
I would ask our legal staff down there, I do, I do know this young man out here representing his father. He's a metro officer, he's a very, very good metro officer, and I certainly appreciate what he does for me and my ward. Other than that, I would call myself his friend, I certainly respect what he does.
Thank you, Councilman.
I, I, I feel comfortable voting on this. I haven't had any prior discussion before today with the applicant or his father, but like I say, I don't have any problem voting on it if I can.
Okay. Council, as long as the friendship doesn't rise to the level where it would impair your independence of judgment, you would be okay to vote?
I feel very comfortable at all.
Okay.
Very, very good. Councilman Ross, did you want to be heard?
Just disclosure, Your Honor, I believe the applicant is my brother's ex-wife's father. Am I correct, Pat? Did I get, did I get the relationship worked out right?
Yes, yes.
I, I don't believe this should hinder me in any way in making a decision in regards to their application.
Very good. Okay, I, I gotta see that family tree, but, that's very cool. Okay, is that, is that appropriate, Mr. Scott?
Yes, in the same admonition to you, as long as your independence of judgment isn't compromised, and you're okay to vote.
All right, it's a public hearing, folks. Would anybody like to be heard? Seeing that we'll close the public hearing, then, Councilman Reese.
Yes, you are aware of the conditions?
Yes, Councilman.
You know I am, how I am about the graffiti and, you know, the alleyway, I want to get kept clean and stuff.
Actually, we have cleanup as of eleven o'clock this afternoon, this morning, and you're more than welcome to have Neighborhood Services go down and take a little...
That's fine, that's fine. Your Honor, I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation, planning commission's recommendation for approval, and with all conditions...
All right, let's vote.
Wish him good luck in Ward Three.
Very good, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Items seventy-five is SUP one-three-two-eight-nine. It'll be a public hearing. The applicant is Mr. Partners Summerlin LLC. The owner is Erin Eli Eli et al. Request for a special use permit for proposed supper club at twelve-twenty-five South Fort Apache Road, Suite one hundred. It's in Ward Two. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Victor Rodriguez, thirty-one-eleven South Valley View, representing the item. This is a request for a supper club. It is in conformance with Title Nineteen. Staff is recommending approval. Planning commission unanimously approved it, and we respectfully request your approval, and we concur with staff's conditions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the gentleman at this time? All right, folks, a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard? We'll close the public hearing, then. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. My motion is for approval, consistent with staff's recommendations.
Okay, let's vote, please. Motion carries. What kind of supper club is it going to be?
Oriental.
Okay, with food, of course?
Yes. Restaurant and alcohol area.
Okay, any specialties?
Do not know.
This is a chance, this is free, free advertising for people.
Free advertising? I, I do not know.
Honest to goodness, I gave you a big chance. That was about a twenty thousand dollar shot, you had, which you blew, okay? That's it, next?
Thank you.
Okay, yes. You all set for it? All right, we're calling seventy-two and seventy-three again, which was trailed. Seventy-two is SUP one-three-five-three-seven. The applicant owner is Rainbow Studios LLC, request for a special use permit for proposed mixed-use development at six-eleven South Tonopah Drive. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions. And seventy-three is SDR one-three-five-three-four, same applicant owner, request for site development plan review for proposed mixed-use development consisting of thirty-nine hundred and forty-six square feet of office space and twenty-two residential units on point-six-nine acres at six-eleven South Tonopah Drive. These are both in Ward Five, and they're both public hearings which are now declared open. Are the applicants here, Rainbow Studios LLC?
No, I spoke with Ken Wilson.
Oh, okay, very good.
That's who the applicant is, and this project is The Strand. We're very much aware of this project, Your Honor, and spoke with Ken on yesterday, so we're good. On item number seventy-two, Your Honor, move for approval with all conditions, please.
All right, before we vote, anybody want to be heard on these items? All right, seeing none, there's a motion, let's vote, please. Motion carries, and seventy-three, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for approval with all conditions, please.
Let's vote, please.
If I may, Mayor and Councilmen, just one correction on condition number three, to reference the revised site plans, date stamped July eighteenth, oh six.
All right, thank you, the record will reflect that. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item seventy-six is SUP one-three-four-seven-eight. The applicant is Sheik Designer Boutique. The owner is West Sahara Associates. Request for a special use permit for proposed second-hand dealer clothing at sixty-three-seventy-eight West Sahara Avenue. It's in Ward One. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Imelda I. Poria. I'm just requesting for a special use permit for second-hand dealership, for women's clothings.
Are there any questions of the young lady? Folks, public hearing. Anybody? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Weekly.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. On behalf of the councilwoman, she'd like to make a motion to move for approval.
Very good, let's vote on that. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Item seventy-seven is SUP one-three-five-oh-one. The applicant owner is Elkhorn ninety-five Partners LLC. Request for a special use permit for a proposed supper club adjacent to the east side of Durango Drive approximately eleven hundred feet south of Elkhorn Road. It's in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. It's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, John Gilmore, Regional Director for Johnny Carino's Italian Restaurant. Just here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I assume it's an Italian restaurant?
That's correct.
Okay, any specialties?
Bold flavors, large portions, good food.
All right, very good. Bold flavors and large portions, okay. All right, any other questions that are very relevant? Okay, folks, it's a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard? We'll close the public hearing. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. Have you had a chance to review the conditions, and you're in agreement with all of the conditions?
Yes, we have, and we are.
Then we'll follow, Your Honor, move, we'll follow planning commission's staff's recommendations for approval with conditions.
Thank you, let's vote. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item seventy-eight is SUP one-three-five-five-five. The applicant is Showcase Slots. The owner is Sahara SAB Nevada LLC. Request for a special use permit for a proposed second-hand dealer slot machines for personal use at twenty-six-hundred West Sahara Avenue in Suite one-oh-three. This is going to be heard in conjunction with item twenty-four from this morning's agenda, which is the approval of a new Class II second-hand dealer license, PBC Enterprises Inc., doing business at Showcase Slots, twenty-six-hundred West Sahara Avenue, Suite one-oh-three. That's it. All right, planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Pete Castiglia, thirty-four-thirty West Sunset, representing Showcase Slots.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Castiglia? Folks, it's a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and this is in Ward One, so Councilman Weekly's covering.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion for approval with all conditions, please.
All right, that's on seventy-eight. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, and on the morning agenda, twenty-four.
Move for approval, please, with all conditions.
Thank you, let's vote on that, please. Post. Bless you. Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Seventy-nine is VAC one-three-two-six-nine. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Ruth I. Poliak. Petition to vacate a portion of Shalowa Drive between Johnson Avenue and Charleston Boulevard in Ward Three. Planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, public hearing is now open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Poliak Carlo. I'm the spouse of Ruth. She's in attendance with the doctor's appointment at this time, so unavailable to make this plea to you to give the final period to approval.
All right, any questions, Mr. Poliak? All right, folks, a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard? We'll close the public hearing, then. Councilman Reese.
Yes, Your Honor, no questions, comments, and we'll follow staff's recommendation, planning commission's recommendation for approval, please, with all conditions.
Very good, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, and eighty-six. Eighty-three is ZON one-three-five-two-oh. A public hearing. The applicant is Red Vista Development. The owner is Jones Estates Development LLC. Request for a rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to RP two, residential plan development, two units per acre, on two-point-five-six acres at fifty-twenty North Jones Boulevard. This is in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions. Eighty-four is WVR one-three-five-two-three. Same applicant, same owner. Request for a waiver of title eighteen-point-one-two-point-one-six-oh to allow approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-four feet between street intersections where two-hundred-and-twenty feet is the minimum distance separation required on two-point-five-six acres at fifty-twenty North Jones Boulevard. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions. Eighty-five is VAR one-three-five-two-one. Same applicant, same owner. Request for variance to allow a residential plan development on two-point-five-six acres where a minimum of five acres is required at fifty-twenty North Jones Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions. And finally, eighty-six, which is SDR one-three-five-two-four. Same applicant, same owner. Request for site development plan review for a proposed four-lot, single-family residential development on two-point-five-six acres of fifty-twenty North Jones Boulevard. 5020 North Jones Boulevard. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions. These are all in Ward 6. They're all public hearings which are now declared open. Yes, ma'am.
Stephanie Nelson here on behalf of the applicant, 6402 McLeod. We are here to concur with all recommendations put forth from staff. We have met with the neighbors to alleviate any issues that had come up at the planning commission meeting, and we are here to answer any additional questions should you have any.
All right, Counselman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I must disclose that my property is directly across the street from this development, and therefore will have to abstain from agenda items 83, 84, 85, and 86.
All right, thank you for that disclosure. All right, are there any questions from the rest of us of this young lady? All right, folks, a public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard on this item or these items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll go to the mayor, Proton.
Yes, Your Honor. Mark, with a little bit of help from you, I think on the rezoning, we're all right with all the conditions.
Yes, sir. It's on the site plan that there's some changes, sir.
You read the conditions on the rezoning, and you agree?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation on item number 3, as well as the planning commission.
If I may, before the
Absolutely.
...vote is taken, there had been some discussion about allowing rural improvements on Rosada adjacent to this site. The conditions in the zoning currently do not allow that, and I would just respectfully request your guidance on whether that should be allowed or not.
Well, I was going to do that on the site development, are you also?
The condition that speaks to it is actually on the zoning.
Okay, that's fine. Would you be willing then to put in the rural improvements on this site?
Yes, we would.
And if I may, I'd like to read in the following
Please do.
Amendment to condition number 3.
Please.
Construct rural improvements to consist of permanent asphalt paving and rolled curb on the development side of the street on Rosada Way adjacent to this site concurrent with development of this site. Unless otherwise allowed by the city engineer, streetlights shall be constructed at all exterior intersections. All other exterior street lighting will be stubbed out for later use, including all necessary underground conduit and pull boxes at each streetlight location. But the installation of the streetlights shall be deferred, provided that the developer provide to the city such streetlights for the future installation. Alternatively, monies in lieu of such deferred streetlights, including bases, may be contributed to the city if allowed by the Department of Public Works. Extend all required underground utilities such as electrical, telephone, et cetera, located within public rights of way past the boundaries of this site prior to construction of hard-surfacing asphalt or concrete. And that concludes my amendment.
Do you agree to those questions?
Yes, we do concur with that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your assistance on this. With that change modification to item number, condition number 3, then, Your Honor, I make a motion to follow, again, follow the planning commission's staff's recommendation for approval on the rezoning.
All right, if I, that's on 83. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. On 84, please.
Yes, Your Honor, I mean, again, I want to follow the planning commission's staff's recommendation for approval on item number 84.
Thank you. Let's vote, please.
With all conditions.
Motion carries. 85, please.
Yes, on the variance, 13521, I make a motion to follow the planning commission's staff's recommendation with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries. And finally, 86.
Yes, I would like to make a motion for approval if the applicant will agree to single-story lots on the east side, lots 1 and 2.
Yes, we have already agreed to that.
And also agree to coordinate with the neighbors to construct a eight-foot wall and tearing down the existing wall.
Yes, we have met with Mr. Klickner and discussed that as well.
Okay, thank you. Then, Your Honor, I make a motion for following the planning commission's staff's recommendation for approval with those conditions amended and corrected and agreed to. Yes?
If I may, Mayor and Mayor, Proton.
Yes.
We would need to change condition number 3 to indicate that the site plan is date-stamped July 18th, '06, and then add in those as separate conditions, that the homes on the east properties shall be single-story or 25 feet, whichever is less, and that there will be a single eight-foot wall on the east side upon approval by the adjacent property owners.
Thank you. The post corrections, also, then, we continue to follow, make a motion for approval with all conditions.
And those are agreeable, correct?
Yes, they are agreeable.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
87 and 88. 87 is VAR 13498. The applicant, The Kids Room. The owner, Glenbart Properties, LLC. Request for variance to allow a zero-foot setback in the side yard area where 10 feet is the minimum setback required on .55 acres at 2,101 South Rainbow Boulevard. It's in Ward 1. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions. 88 is SDR 13497. The same applicant, same owner. Request for site development plan review for a proposed 3,225 square foot accessory storage addition to an existing commercial building on .55 acres at 2,101 South Rainbow Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions. These are both public hearings which are now declared open. Is anybody here? Is anybody here on behalf of The Kids Room or Glenbart Properties? Kids Room, Glenbart Properties. All right. Counselor Weekly, what's your pleasure?
And I would assume they want to move forward with this, and so I'll make a motion to move for approval with all conditions, please.
All right, that's on 87. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. And 88, please.
And on item number 8, 88, move for approval with all conditions, please.
All right, thanks. If anyone wanted to be heard on those, please step up. All right, seeing none, all the public hearings have been closed. All right, there's a motion. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, before we continue, on 86, did we, did you add the rural improvements on the site plan as well as the zoning?
We did that on the rezoning.
I think it also should go on the site plan, too.
All right, young lady, could you come up here and tell us you agreed to the rural improvements on the site plan as well?
We do concur with that recommendation.
All right, I'll be made part of the record. I don't think we have to re-vote it.
We probably need to resend and then
All right.
Yes. Sorry.
Yeah, I make a motion to resend our vote on item number 86, please.
All right, that's a motion to resend on 86. Please vote. Post? Motion carries.
And then I would all, I would make a motion then for approval of item number 86 with the condition added to add all road.
As read in previously for number 83.
That'd be correct.
Right, would you agree upon?
Yes, we do.
Okay, let's vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may
Yes.
I apologize since we're interrupting with resends. On item 73, I need to have that rescinded and re-voted because the change in the site, in the site plan date is inaccurate. It should have stayed the original site plan date. If you could, please, I'd appreciate that on item 73.
All right, Counselman?
Yes, Your Honor.
I apologize.
All right.
So that would just take away my change and go back to the original date.
You say when, Ms. Ronus? All right, Counselman, you have motion to resend?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to resend item number 73, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. And on 73?
And on item number 73, I'd like to move for approval with all conditions as amended, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Just changing the
Just changing the
The date.
Just wanted to cover all bases, Ron.
Okay, all right, let's vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll skip over to 93, to 92, 93. Right, Mayor Proton?
What am I up? 89? Okay, all right, 89. VAR 12782. The applicant is James E. Stroh. The owner is Northbrook LLC. At our request for variance to allow 361 parking spaces where 412 is the minimum number of parking spaces required for a proposed church, house of worship on 7.84 acres at 4275, 4285, 4295, 4305, 4315, 4325, and 4335 North Rancho Drive. It's in Ward 6. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval.
Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open.
Good afternoon, City Council members. I'm Bob Gronhour, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here representing the property owner in this matter. This is simply a parking variance to allow a church on the property. As you can see on the overhead here, it's office number 4, which is on the backside of the property on the southwest corner. Currently, we submitted to the planning commission, your staff department, a few weeks ago, a parking study that actually showed that the parking impact in this area is actually negligible. There's more than enough parking to support the church coming into this area. And one other thing that I'd like to mention for the record is there was a condition that was imposed by the planning commission, which is condition number 3. It actually states that any new office uses not having a C of O as of 6/22/06 shall only be open between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6, uh, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. For point of clarification on the record, we, the office uses that we have are the office, are the buildings I'm showing you here that are in the back of our property. We would still, for point of clarification, like to keep the retail buildings, which is retail building 1 and 2, that face out on the Rancho Road here, to still have regular business hours. Because as I was mentioning to you earlier, the church is on the back of the property here, so if anybody's going to be using the church, those uses are after 6:00 PM at night typically for the church. And all these uses in here are okay to be between 8:00 and 6:00 during the day, but we'd like to still keep the retail and the restaurants there for future uses to be open past 6:00 o'clock.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Gronhour? Folks, public hearing. Anyone like to be heard? We'll close the public hearing. Counselman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Gronauer, aren't those uses open until after 6:00 now?
Yes, but the future uses that are supposed to be coming in, I just want to make sure I'm making that clear.
As long as they're retail uses.
Retail, yes.
My understanding is the hours are subject only to the office uses, and Director, am I correct?
Yes, sir, that's how the condition reads.
And I'm just clarifying that.
Okay, that's fine. So you're good with all the other conditions and so forth?
We're fine, yes, sir.
Move for approval. Well, before I do that, Mr. Gronauer, you know how I feel about parking waivers and lack of parking spaces in a lot of these developments, and I just, you're very aware of that.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not one to incline that, but because, because of this use and the interesting way it's going to be used.
Yes.
The owner's done a great job with that place. It looks wonderful. It's a great asset to that area. So I'm going to move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Nice tie.
I broke my thumb. I
Oh.
I can't even button my shirts right now.
Where did you get that tie, Bob?
In two weeks, I'll have a tie on.
How did you break your thumb? How did you break your thumb?
Playing basketball. I went up to jam the ball.
You're too old for that. Out of here.
Exactly.
Another one. Come on.
You went to jam a ball?
Forget about it.
I told my client I'd do anything to get this approval, and that's why I broke the thumb. How about that?
You'll even sell you a car, okay? Out of here, please. Item number 90 and 91. 90 is SUP 12902. The applicant is Architect Gerald Garapich, AIA. The owner Silver State Bank. Request for a special use permit for a proposed financial institution general with drive-through with waivers to allow a drive-through less than 330 feet from a single-family residential dwelling and unscreened drive-through along adjacent rights of way and building placement behind the front setback line on .63 acres at 7125 North Durango Drive. It's in Ward 6. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval. Subject to conditions, it's going to be a public hearing. And 91 is SDR 12901. Same applicant, same owner. Request for a site development plan review for a proposed 2,367 square foot financial institution general with drive-through with waivers from Town Center Build Two requirements and to allow a one-story building within the UCTC Urban Center Mixed-Use Town Center designation where two stories is the minimum allowed on .63 acres at 7125 North Durango Drive. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval subject to conditions. The public hearing is now open on both of these items. Is anybody here representing Mr. Garapich or Silver State Bank? All right, seeing no one, what's your pleasure, Counselman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Wheeler, can I address agenda item number 91 specifically? Staff's denial of that is because of what?
Um, Mayor and Councilmen, in this case, staff recommended denial of the SUP for the drive-through uses principally because Town Center is designed to be more pedestrian-friendly and not having these drive-through uses. Concurrently, the site development plan, of course, has the drive-through and also waivers of Town Center standards, and for those reasons, staff is recommending denial on both items.
Um, thank you. And the Town Center standards are two stories in that location? Is that how I'm reading that?
Uh, yes, sir. Again, the Town Center is the area that calls for the concentration of the commercial uses, and in this area, it has a two-story minimum. And this is a one-story building that is proposed.
Thank you, Director. Agenda item number 90, Your Honor, I move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
All right, this is a public hearing, folks. Would anyone like to be heard before we vote on this? All right, we'll close the public hearing. There's a motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. And 91, please.
And I think that the, agenda item number 90, the intent was to make it more pedestrian-friendly and get people out of their cars. I don't think, however, that the waiving the standard of a two-story requirement is going to be devastating to this area. So I'm going to approve the agenda item number 91, SDR, without the drive-through.
All right.
If I may, Mayor and Councilmen, then we would amend condition number 3 to specifically indicate that the drive-through shall be eliminated.
All right. Is that your intention, Counselor?
That is, Your Honor.
Very good. Let's vote, please.
And I guess I'd maybe chime in here. The site development plan review is for a bank, and you're, but you're denying the special use permit for a bank? So you may, you may need to deny them both, and
No, I'm denying the special use permit for the drive-through.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Incorrect.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. And Mr. Gronauer, a speedy recovery.
Maybe, sir.
I had a guilty conscience there for a while. All right. Okay, 92 and 93. 92 is SUP 13536. The applicant is Nevada Power Company. The owner is Kyle Acquisition Group, LLC. Request for a special use permit for a proposed electric utility substation approximately 560 feet west of Wallop Highway and 890 feet north of Grand Teton Drive. It's in Ward 6. The plan, planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions. 93 is SDR 13535. Same applicant, same owner. Request for site development plan review for a proposed electric utility substation on 4.09 acres, approximately 560 feet west of Wallop Highway and 890 feet north of Grand Teton Drive. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, these are both public hearings which are now declared open. Counselman Reese.
Yes, Your Honor. Again, I want to disclose the fact that my daughter does work for Nevada Power Company. I don't think maybe this will affect her salary one way or the other. I have not talked to her about this item, and I feel that I can conscientiously discuss and vote on this item.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Russell Rowe, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. Here on behalf of Kyle Acquisition Group. This is a site plan and use permit for a substation in the Kyle Canyon Master Plan community. The GPA for this site was already approved by this council about a month ago, and this is simply the design review and use permit for the substation. Staff recommends approval and would ask your approval as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Rowe? Folks, public hearing on both of these. Be happy to hear from you. All right, we'll close the public hearing then. This is Counselman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to move to approve agenda item number 92. However, I have, I'll get to the SDR and make mention of that. We'll approve agenda item number 92 first, please.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. And 93, please.
And on agenda item 93, there's been discussion with staff and Nevada Power regarding future locations for substations, future locations for distribution lines. I think it would be prudent for any of the public entities who do business, especially Nevada Power, in the future, to post signs where these locations are going to be in the future. We don't currently have anything on our books requiring them to do that. However, I think it, a good idea in regards to not only power lines and transmission lines and substations, but also future sites of high schools and junior high schools and elementary schools, including our own city parks and facilities of such. That way, the residents of the northwest and or anywhere in this city can obviously see what's going to be developed around them to help them make a choice in regards to where they want to live. But that's the direction we're going to go with discussions, and I just want you to be aware of that because I know Nevada Power is. And, Your Honor, if you'd let Mr. Patino say a few words first before I make that motion?
Certainly.
Edgar Patino, representing Nevada Power, and we have been working with Counselman Ross, and we'll be meeting in the future to work on disclosure of that and getting our residents in the city to understand as much as possible about future facilities because I think that's a win-win for the community.
Thank you for your comments. And with that, Your Honor, agenda item 93, I move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Council.
Item 94 is SUP 12936. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc. The owner is U-Haul Real Estate Company. Request for a special use permit to raise the height of an existing off-premise advertising billboard sign to be 30 feet above the height of the US 95 freeway or 55 feet on a portion of 1.01 acres at 2021 West Bonanza Road. It's in Ward 5. There's a note that the request is being amended to raise the height of an existing off-premise advertising billboard sign to be 26 feet above the height of the US 95 freeway or 70 feet in APN 139-28-401-001 should be deleted. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman, council members. Kurt Lambeth, 9960 West Cheyenne. On behalf of the applicant, we are here to get the special use permit. Planning and staff recommend approval and
All right. Are there any questions of the gentleman? Folks, it's a public hearing. Anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. This is Counselman Weekly.
Yeah, thank you. And, Your Honor, I'd like to follow staff's recommendation for approval with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 95 is SUP 13525. The applicant is Vegas Valley Treatment Center. The owner is MRZ Management, LLC. Request for a special use permit for a proposed facility to provide testing, treatment, or counseling for drug or alcohol abuse at 1835 East Charleston Boulevard, Suite 101. It's in Ward 3. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
Stevens Zetland, on behalf of Vegas Valley Treatment Center. We agree with staff's recommendations on the planning commission and abide by all recommendations as well and conditions.
All right. Are there any questions of the gentleman?
I have, yes, sir, I have a question, but I'll wait for that before they carry.
Okay, fine. Folks, the public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then.
Yes, Your Honor. I feel very strongly about these type of uses, especially in a area where we're trying to redevelop. I know that the hours are supposedly to be from 6:00 to 3:00. Is this going to be appointment-driven or is this going to be walk-in and
Most of it will be appointment-driven, yes. There will be some walk-ins as well.
I have had other treatment centers and counseling in my ward, and they really prove to be a problem. I know that we have a lot of loitering in front of and side of, along the streets, doing whatever they do. That's why they're there. And this is an area here where we, the city has spent a lot of money across the street in trying to redevelop Jewel Charleston Plaza Mall. I understand why planning commission and why staff recommends approval. I just don't feel like that this area is a place for this type of use. I don't feel like it's compatible with what we're trying to do over on East Fremont, which I don't feel like it's compatible with what we're trying to do over on East Fremont, which would be backed up to this property over here. Your Honor, I just really have a hard time trying to convince myself this would be beneficial and useful in this area. I know that we do need to have these type of facilities. I would just hope that they could find other locations better than this one. So my motion is going to be for denial of the SUP 13525.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 96 is SUP 13541. The applicant is Nelson Owens 48 LLC. The owner is KC Propco Holding LLC. Request for special use permit for a proposed pet boarding establishment at 3223 North Rainbow Boulevard. It's in Ward Six. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
Nelson Tressler, 3930 Howard Hughes Parkway. Staff has recommended approval, and we agree with all the terms and conditions of that approval.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of the gentleman? Folks, public hearing. Anyone like to be heard? We'll close the public hearing then. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission and staff for approval on Agenda Item Number 96.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, may I just ask a question? There was a question on the clarification if the dogs were to be kept indoors after 6:00 PM daily or after 8:00 PM daily?
Thank you, Director. I am concerned about the dogs not being able to go outside after 6:00 PM because of the heat issues, so I would like to change that condition to read 8:00 PM.
Okay, then that will be a change in Condition Number Five, to change 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you, Director. As amended.
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 97 is SDR 13496. The applicant is Rick Laswell. The owner is Mountain View Assembly of God. Request for a site development plan review for the proposed addition of three temporary modular buildings to an existing school on 20.07 acres at 3850 East Bonanza Road. It's in Ward Three. The Planning Commission and staff recommend denial. Pardon me. The Planning Commission recommends denial. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open.
Good afternoon. My name is Crystal Van Kempin-McLanahan. I am here on behalf of Mountain View Assembly and Mountain View Christian Schools.
Jay Martin here on behalf of Mountain View Assembly as well.
Okay, be happy to hear from you, folks.
As stated, we are asking for approval of three modulators to accommodate the growth of the church and the school.
Okay, are there any questions of the lady or gentleman?
Again, Your Honor, I'll wait after the public hearing.
All right, it's a public hearing, folks. Anybody like to be heard? Be happy to hear from you. Yes, sir. You have to step up and give us your name, please.
My name is Jeff Spriggs. I live at 6845 East Washington, and I have two children that attend the school. And I'll tell you what, a great education they're getting. Our future's our children, and the education is what's going to bring us through, you know, Las Vegas into the next. So I would say, please, please support this. If you haven't had a chance to go to church at Mountain View, take the opportunity to stop in. Stop in, see the school. Just a wonderful opportunity for young people at the school, so please take advantage of it.
Certainly, if I could. I appreciate you coming down.
So do I.
You're very welcome.
I've been to the school on numerous occasions, and I agree with everything you said.
Thank you. Great.
Right, we appreciate you coming down this way.
Very welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? We're happy to hear from you. All right, then we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clear up a couple of issues that was brought forward at the Planning Commission. We do have six modulars that are there on-site right now. They're supposed to be also temporary. They have hidden decorated and done a good job with these modulars, but they are 13, 14, 15, 16 years old. And, you know, I could certainly appreciate, you know, the additions that we have at this location. I think you've done a great job. As you can see on this site here now, the Planning Commission brought out that we need to, you know, clear up some of the litter and stuff.
That has been done.
I know we're going to do that. The landscaping, I know you do a great job there. I really appreciate you being in Ward Three. I know you've had people bring your students from all over the valley, and they've kind of talked about your location and what they see when they get there, or what they see on the way to there, what they see on the way leaving. And we're trying to clear that up also. I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for approval. And again, the temporary, we need to have a time on there, and hopefully that it'll get better where we can eventually remove them, temporary structure, like I say. I haven't had any complaints from the neighbors to the east. I guess they feel like that you've done a good job also. I really appreciate what the school has done as far as working with my office and Metro on some of the issues we've had down there. I think you've done a great job in clearing those up, doing what Metro has recommended, recommending putting in the cameras and stuff to secure your facility there. I really enjoy riding down there and seeing the ballpark and the new gym you put in there. You've done a fantastic job, so...
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion, Your Honor, to follow staff's recommendation for approval of Item Number Seven, Item Number 97, with all conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Margot?
If I may, one change to Condition Number Eight. The last two sentences should read that landscaping shall be provided along the side of the proposed and existing modular buildings adjacent to the east property line.
They have agreed to that, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
And I'm going to make a disclosure, Councilwoman Weekly suggested. My wife is involved with the Meadow School, which is a private school, has no proprietary interest. I know the great work that this school does, so I have no problem in voting for this at all.
No, you don't, Mayor. You may vote.
Very good. Let's vote then. Post. Close to carries. Good luck to you, folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 98, 99, 100. 98 is ROC 14278. The applicant owner is Party Homes LLC and Property Holding Corporation. Request for a review of Condition Number Nine of an approved site development plan review to amend Condition Number Nine to allow an 18-foot front setback to the front of the garage as measured from the back of the sidewalk, or a 22-foot front setback to the front of the garage as measured from the back of the pedestrian access easement was approved for a proposed subdivision on 20.14 acres adjacent to the southwest corner of Elkhorn Road and Fort Apache Road. This is in Ward Six. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. Item 99 is ROC 14279. The applicant owner is Party Homes LLC and Property Holding Corporation. Request for a review of Condition Number Nine of an approved site development plan review to amend Condition Number Nine to allow an 18-foot front setback to the front of the garage as measured from the back of the sidewalk, where a 22-foot front setback to the front of the garage as measured from the back of the pedestrian access easement was approved for a proposed subdivision on 5.06 acres at the southeast corner of TP Lane and Deer Springs Way, Ward Six. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. Councilman Weekly, that would be a good wrap, too. Okay. 100 is ROC 14280. Same applicant owner. Request for a review of Condition Number Seven of an approved site development plan review to amend Condition Number Seven to allow an 18-foot front setback to the front of the garage as measured from the back of the sidewalk, where a 22-foot front setback to the front of the garage as measured from the back of the pedestrian access easement was approved for a proposed subdivision on 1.26 acres adjacent to the northeast corner of TP Lane and Durrell Lane. It's in Ward Six. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. These are all public hearings, which are now declared open. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Barbara Baird, 2260 Corporate Circle. We concur with staff recommendations, and we'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the young lady? Folks, public hearing. Anyone want to be heard on these? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moving to follow staff recommendations for approval, subject to conditions.
All right, that's on 98. Let's vote.
98.
Thank you. Vote, please. Post. Yep. Motion carries.
On Agenda Item 99, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, and 100.
And on 100, also wish to follow staff's recommendations for approval, subject to conditions.
All right, let's vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck to you, ma'am. The record should reflect that Councilwoman Torkanian has joined us. Well, I didn't say it, okay? All right. Item 101 is MSH 13365. The applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, requests to amend the master plan of streets and highways to add an alternate alignment for Mountains Edge Parkway as Freeway Expressway in Ward Six. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. This is a public hearing, which is now declared open. I should state this before we start. There was a request by Georgie Cromer Esquire, representing the Georgie Cromer Family Trust, asking that the item be postponed until he returns from out of town, and he's asking us to move this to the August 17th agenda. That's been brought to my attention. Based on the very narrow scope of what we're doing here today, I really don't believe that a postponement would be appropriate. I'll be happy to explain it to Mr. Cromer upon his return, and be happy to hear from you, gentlemen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jorge Zerrantes, Department of Public Works. Mayor, this item is to add an alternate alignment for the Malinage Parkway to the master plan streets and highways. Adding this alignment, alternate alignment to the plan doesn't necessarily indicate that this is the alignment that the road will follow. It simply allows staff to explore in more detail the feasibility of this alignment being done. Staff feels there's some potential technical benefits that this alignment may provide to the city and to its residents, and would like to explore those further. And I'd like to just kind of briefly explain what some of those potential benefits could be. The current alignment that's approved today is what's shown in yellow here. The alignment that we'd like to study further is the blue alignment shown here. One of the benefits that we see in following this alternate alignment that could potentially help us is that currently today, we've got a 100-foot utility corridor that runs along the pulley alignment. Part of the Malinage Parkway intent was to consolidate the utilities, the flood facilities, the roadway, and a future mass transit alignment, all in one corridor. And so if we were to integrate the new alignment with the existing utility alignment, then we'd have everything under one alignment and not have two utilities out there. Another one of the benefits that we see that could be helpful out there is that this development is adjacent to the mountain area, and a lot of the flood concerns we have in this area is all the rain that comes off of the mountains. And so under the current alignment, it's proposed to put in a flood channel, trap this water, and protect these homes. The revised alignment could allow us to protect up to about 300 additional acres from flooding by allowing us to put the channel closer to where the water comes down and intercept it earlier. One of the other advantages that we see is back in November in 2003, City Council, along with staff, had a master plan suret for the Kyle Canyon Gateway area, and there was a vision out there how this area should develop. This alternate alignment could potentially allow us to have a more cohesive development of this Kyle Canyon area instead of having a road that bisects the middle of development. Another benefit that we'd like to explore further is, under this alignment, we would have residents only on one side of a freeway facility. As you all know, some of the concerns today with our freeway facilities is we've got residents on both sides, and there's the issue of having to have sound walls to protect the residents. By following this alternate alignment, it may allow us to have just residents on one side, being that the west side is the Red Rock Conservation Area, which is in potential for development. And so it'd certainly be a cost savings for the taxpayers as we build this facility to only have to protect one side of the corridor, not both. And finally, I'd like to point out that the horse interchange system under construction is right here. The current alignment has a system-to-system interchange, which is going to connect the...
You want to show it again?
Sure.
I did not have an...
It's right here.
There we go. Good, thank you.
And the system-to-system interchange that's proposed with the Malinage Parkway is going to be a spaghetti bowl type of facility where we connect two freeways together. And the current location has it pretty close in proximity to the horse interchange. The revised alignment may allow us to push this further north, where we've got more separation between the two facilities, so that traffic coming on and off the different ramps would have a better ability to merge. Given those, we'd like to have this move forward as an alternate alignment so that we can explore if this is a better alignment for us. One of the reasons that we'd like to put on the plan is that part of our analysis requires that we look at some potential public land that's in here, and we'd like to make an application to BLM to see if we can reserve this land. And to do so, we need to have it as an alternate alignment on our adopted master plan so that we can further explore whether BLM would reserve that land for us. And that is the purpose of this item, Council.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions to this this time? All right, does anybody want to speak to this matter? All right, the reason that I'm saying that is I'm going to limit your comments because this is a very limited application that's being made to us today. I understand that the item is to be a proposal to add an alternate... Let me repeat this. An alternate alignment for the city's future freeway network to the northwest. If this item is approved, there will be two alignments for the northern beltway shown on our master plan, the current alignment, and this proposed alternative. And this is why I'm going to limit the input here. What this hearing is not is a hearing to decide whether the city will be asking landowners to sell property affected by the proposed alternative, and this is absolutely equivocally not a hearing in which the city is announcing its intention to condemn anyone's property or a hearing at which the council is making a decision as to whether this proposed alignment is the one to be utilized for the future path of the northern beltway. This is merely to add a proposed alternative to the master plan so the city is able to be more flexible in its recommendations to the council as to the future of the northwest freeway network. And it's my understanding that at that time, if there is a recommendation, then we'll have full public comment, full public input, but this is not an issue as to whether property values are going to be affected by this or whether there's going to be any condemnation. That's a non-issue at this point in time. It's just putting this out on the master plan so we'll be able to make reference to it in examining the future use of the highway. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, with that in mind, let's see whether or not we can hold our comments to a... I mean, you came down here, so I'm going to let you talk, that's for darn sure. But I do not need the Declaration of Independence today.
All right.
Tell us your name, please.
My name is Al Twaini, 5300 West Sahara, Las Vegas, 89146.
Yes, sir. Be happy to hear from you.
And I'm glad that you're able to clarify all that. I was under the impression that this is...
This is not it. This is so far in the future when we're going to have a serious discussion as far as what's going to happen to this. This just gives the ability for the city to study it.
Okay, well...
And if I'm saying something that's wrong, I want to be corrected because this is what I've been briefed on. I don't want to deceive anybody here, that's for darn sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Counselors, for the record, my name is Jim Lewis.[1630.44]
I'm with the City Attorney's Office.
Yes.
No, what you were briefed on, what you've heard is correct. This is an addition of an alternate route to our master plan of streets and highways. This will permit our Public Works Department to then look between both the proposed, the proposed alternative one and this new alternative if approved. And then we will be back, our Public Works Department will be back with additional items before this council so we can consider which one of these two-
Right.
-you, you all will select.
Right, okay, good. So be happy to hear from you.
That being said, I don't want to take any more of the time-
No, it's fine, as I said. Are you with Ms. Chinatown? What are you doing here?
I'm a landowner.
I am too.
All right, okay, yes.
I just wanted to say what it is, is a proposed alternate route, right?
It, it, yes, it's a-
It's just a proposal where you're going to choose between the routes that you have.
And that's a long way down the line. It just gives them the ability to start discussing it and then they'll bring it back to us as to their recommendation and we could tell them to jump in the lake.
You wouldn't do that.
I'd say it nicely. Okay.
Well, I was going to voice malposition this, but for the time being, I'll just wait till-
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Your Honor, members of the council, I appreciate the clarification as well. My name is Justin Smurber. I'm here on behalf of my employer, John Moran Jr., and our client Rancho Drive LLC. Rancho Drive LLC owns approximately eight point eight acres along Kyle Canyon Road.
It's not up there, let me, could you point it out again, please?
It's actually this road right here.
Okay.
It's actually, oh, I'm sorry, I just found it right here. Yeah. These three parcels right here.
All right.
Their property will effectively be taken by the proposed Northern Relignment. As a result, I'm here today to make record that they're strongly opposed to it, obviously. Also, I have here today with me a re, a letter from my employer, John Moran Jr., to you, Mr. Mayor-
Yes.
-that I would like to, with your permission, to put into record.
Absolutely. Please, give it to Ms. Ronimis, it's a matter of record.
Thanks.
As I said, I, if I felt that we were going to the issue that's addressed in the letter, I would certainly give you all the opportunity in the world to make whatever arguments and presentations you have, but we're nowhere near there at this point.
Absolutely, I appreciate that and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Hayes, 199 Aurora Grande, here on behalf of Rinker Materials West LLC. Rinker Materials recently constructed a batch plant in this area. We support the study, the alternative we think would impact the existing batch plant less than their current proposal, and therefore we, we support it and look forward to see how it progresses. Thank you.
Very good. Boy, the first time I think Mr. Hayes has ever agreed with anything in the seven years that I've been sitting here. But as I said to him today, he's one of the great attorneys, and I mean that seriously. He always makes a very cogent, meaningful presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. Stephanie McKean from Moran &amp; Associates, 630 South Fourth Street. I'm here on behalf of one of our clients, Land House LLC, who is a property owner. I'll tell you because it's so much smaller, but right about here.
Okay.
We oppose the proposed alternative alignment. Our client's plan for future development of the parcel that has been contemplated was in reliance upon the alignment for Mountain Edge Parkway as originally proposed. We do appreciate clarification by the city attorney and the council as to the process from this point forward, and we will hold the rest of our comments until then. Thank you.
And that's appropriate. Thank you. Okay, folks, anybody else like to be heard? Sure, I mean, you sat around the afternoon, we're happy to hear from you. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. This is Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I appreciate all of the comments that were shared today and, Your Honor, your clarification of this agenda item. You mentioned something this morning, Your Honor, in regards to our, our role and the difference between us as a local government and the private sector and that we need to be concerned about the big picture, the greater good for the entire community. I do know that staff has been working with my office diligently to create the necessary infrastructure needed for the growth of the Northwest. I support this proposed alternative to, to the, to the alignment out there and would like staff to continue to, and pursue to, to look into it. So with that, Your Honor, I move to approve agenda item 101, subject to conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Opposed? Most of you carried, and thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean that seriously.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right, items, let's see, 101A through. Okay, 101A is MOD 11027. The applicant is Eric Miller. The owner is Sabalas De Oro Estates LLC, requests for major modification to the Lone Mountain West master development plan to amend sections 2.3.3, 6.1 little A, and 6.31 little A to allow three-story buildings and attached single-family units in the L-low density special use, land use designation in Ward 4. The planning commission staff recommend approval subject to conditions. It's going to be a public hearing. 101B is ZON 11031. Same applicant, same owner, requests for rezoning from you on developed PCD plan, community development master plan designation, to PD plan development L-low density residential special land use designation on five acres west of the intersection of Cheyenne Avenue and the I-215 Beltway in Ward 4. The planning commission staff recommend approval subject to conditions. 101C is WVR 12368. Same applicant, same owner, requests for waiver of Title 18.12.100 to allow a 24-foot wide private streets where 37 feet is the minimum required on five acres west of the intersection of Cheyenne Avenue and the I-215 Beltway. The planning commission staff recommend approval subject to conditions. 101D is VAR 11030. Same applicant, same owner, requests for variance to allow a maximum building height of 44 feet where 35 feet is the maximum height allowed for a proposed attached single-family development on five acres west of the intersection of Cheyenne Avenue and I-215 Beltway. Planning commission and staff recommend approval subject to conditions. 101E is VAC 12255. Same applicant, same owner, petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements, generally located adjacent to the north side of Buckskin Avenue approximately 610 feet west of Cliff Shadows Parkway. The planning commission staff recommend approval subject to conditions. And finally, 101FSDR 11034. Same applicant, same owner, requests for site development plan review for proposed 30-unit attached single-family development on five acres adjacent to the intersection of Cheyenne Avenue and I-215 Beltway. The planning commission staff recommend approval subject to conditions. These are all in Ward 4. As I've stated, they're all public hearings, which are now declared open. And before we hear from Mr. Curran, I would like to make part of the record, if I could, on the prior item, a memorandum which was submitted to me by Mr. Lewis of the City Attorney's Office and the email concerning Mr. Cromer's request for a continuance, okay? If you make that part of the record, I think that's important. Very good. Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Bill Curran, 300 South Fourth Street, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. If you'll grant me your indulgence for just one moment, I do have a student with us who is interning this summer for Judge Pro. He has asked her, her name is Laura Redfern, she's a student at Green Valley High. Judge Pro has tried to get her introduced to all aspects of law and law practice, and we're honored that he asked her to come with us today to watch your-
Young lady, come right up here and stand next to Mr. Curran. Let me tell you something.
I told her she might be asked to sing.
No, well, I-
No, I don't sing.
I don't know, but I'll tell you this, this, I hope you, how long have you been here? For a while, this afternoon?
Oh, yes, I've been here since 1:00.
Okay, well, what you see really is what I believe the framers of the Constitution had in mind when they said that we, the people. It's a very interesting process where our constituents stand 15 feet away from us. There's no place for us to run and hide. We're not going up to Carson City, we're not going back to Washington. We have to address the issues, and this is the greatest form of government imaginable.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad that you have an opportunity to see what we do, and I'll be very interested in hearing your comments after, after the meeting.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here, thank you.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Curran.
Thank you. With that, Your Honor, as indicated, we have a number of items on today's agenda, and we appreciate your accommodation in allowing these to be added as addendum items. In short, we have a five-acre parcel located on the side of Lone Mountain. It has severe topological restraints on the property, which mean that only about half of the property is really suitable for conventional-type construction due to the hillside. We propose 30 attached townhouses with the usual kind of amenities, the outdoor pool, the clubhouse. One unusual thing about the project is that it's going to have a one-way circular drive that's at ground level on the front, but as it gets between the units, it has the appearance of going underground because it's going to have a man-made, fully landscaped courtyard on top. On the board currently, I have a sort of a rendering or an elevation from above to sort of show the way the units are staggered back and forth to create a sort of an interesting design. I'll use this, however, it's the same plan, but traffic will enter here at, at the ground level, and here it will go underground into a sort of a private alleyway between the units. Up above, this is a landscape plan, up above, you're going to see it's going to be fully landscaped and create a very attractive environment. This diagram illustrates the point on, the part that I'm pointing to is sort of the driveway that I talked about. And each unit is going to have an enclosed two-car garage that is separate and reserved for that unit. It'll be three stories, three living stories. Even on the unit with the garage, part of it'll be occupied by living space. So in order to accomplish all this, we've requested a number of things, including a major modification to your Lone Mountain West master plan for two things. One is to permit the units to be attached. Second is that they be permitted at three stories. Rezoning, I guess, doesn't require much comment. We have also asked for a waiver of Title 18 to allow 24-foot street. It's going to be one way. The fire department, by the way, has required us to make that for, I believe it's 14 feet high, so that they can get the fire equipment through there in case it's necessary, although the buildings will be sprinkled. The controversy on this really has to do with two things. We have a commercial neighbor, the Focus Commercial Group, who has, has a couple of office buildings immediately adjacent to this property, and they're concerned about the major modification to the master plan, particularly the part about it being three stories. There is a, the variance as originally applied for, we asked for 44-feet height where only 35 feet is otherwise permitted. We've had a number of, a large number of meetings with Focus, their various representatives, and Mr. Rowe, their attorney, who's present today, trying to see if we could reach an accord that would resolve all the issues. We've made some significant progress, but we haven't resolved everything. We've also met with your planning staff numerous occasions and with Councilman Brown and his office on a number of occasions. One thing is clear, we should not be pursuing our request for the variance for 44 feet. I believe that it's thought that 35 feet is a standard that should be observed in that area, and we're willing to abide by that and ask that the variance be withdrawn. The other issue is the site development plan. I understand that if we make some changes, that will reduce the height of the building. You may want to see those changes and have that come back before you for a final review of that plan. We don't have a problem with that. I think probably the most effective use of time would be to allow Mr. Rowe to speak and now respond if appropriate.
All right, fine.
Unless you have questions of me.
Councilman Brown, what's your pleasure? Questions of Mr. Curran at this time or Mr. Rowe?
That's fine, if I could, I appreciate that. Mr. Curran, could we go back to the last, the real-life pictures on the overhead? I think there was a series of three, possibly four. Yeah. Okay. Perfect. I just, I wanted to highlight these three photos for the council. If, if you hadn't had the opportunity to go out there, what's interesting about our discussion today is this is perhaps the first piece that has truly hit the hillside. And there are an additional six or seven parcels along this corridor in Ward 4. I know Summerlin West ultimately, and Councilman Wolfson's area, will address some hillside issues as well, ultimately in Ward 6. So some of the things we talk about today have not been defined from a public policy standpoint. And these pictures, these and the following two pictures, give you a sense that when I, I raised some issues as far as keeping the integrity of the mountain versus blending densities, it'll give you a better perspective. Because essentially, if we could freeze on that one, this five-acre parcel, that flat land is perhaps about one and a half to two acres. The applicant proposes to scalp a little bit further into the hillside, again here, but is leaving two, maybe over two acres as you get 5, 10, 15 feet and above to avoid that has happened in other municipalities that have given the ability for developers to go in and literally blast the mountain. This one has some developable acreage. Just north of this, we actually have 15 acres that are 30 feet up and privately owned. So part of the public discussion today, and I've spoken to our attorney's office, is just to make sure that things we say and do today are not going to have any kind of adverse impact on future applications, along with the fact that Ms. Wheel and her department are bringing forward a hillside ordinance that will better govern some of these applications we anticipate in the future. But these three photos give a pretty good sense of some of the dialogue that's going to take place.
Is that where we were yesterday?
No. We were about 20 miles away from this.
Okay, it looks like it all. Okay, Mr. Rowe.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. Russell Rowe, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of Focus Property Group. Focus in this instance is, here is both a neighbor and as the designer of the Lone Mountain West master plan. There's nothing we dislike more than standing here on the opposite side of a developer on a project on a very difficult piece of property. And then to top that off, when you have Bill Curran standing next to you, you really don't like doing it. Let me just, I want to give you a bit of the history, and I'm going to be very brief, as brief as I can. As you may know, Focus Property Group owned most of the land within the Lone Mountain Plan. I have a copy of it here for you. Back when this plan was done, it was Focus Property Group that brought the, the application forward through the major projects process to develop the Lone Mountain West plan. It was Focus Property Group that made the commitments to the neighbors and the people who lived in the Lone Mountain West area before it was ever called Lone Mountain West and to the people in Sun City that, that the plan was going to be developed as, as proposed. And for the most part, it has been. And in particular, commitments were made that the, the property along the foothills were going to be protected and not be overdeveloped. As you can see along the, the map there, everything along the western boundary is either low-density or public facilities, which all those public facilities, I believe, will be a park, various parks. And the park just adjacent to us would be an equestrian park. So because of, because of that history, Focus feels committed to protect the plan and defend the plan because they made promises based upon that, as acknowledging that it is a very difficult piece of property and previous developers have come in and owners wanting to develop this at much higher densities than what Mr. Curran's client is proposing at the present time. But the low, low designation in the mountains, Lone Mountain West master plan limits development to single-family detached two-story homes. And what's being proposed here is attached three-story homes, which is of significant concern to Focus, not only because they're next door and they're looking at it every day, they spend more time at that building than they do their own homes, but because of the commitments they've made previously to the people of Lone Mountain West. So the, the plan, the proposed project doesn't comply with the Lone Mountain West plan, it doesn't comply with many areas of the code, although Mr. Curran just acknowledged that he'd withdraw the waiver for going above 35 feet in height. The, what bothers us beyond just the concern about the promises made, but also the potential precedent, as Councilman Brown indicated, there are at least six properties that are similarly situated. All the parcels in yellow, those six are all low-density designated, so this plan would not just change this parcel, but those other six, they are all impacted significantly by top, severe topographical limitations. That's staff's words. That's staff's basis for this major modification and for the approval of this project. And our concern is with that type of precedent set, it's, becomes very difficult for a city council to prevent another project coming through, putting all of the entire density, the full 30 units permitted on the five acres, on the, on the parcels. Some of the parcels north of this site that are impacted by the mountain have less than, less developable space than currently exists on the subject property today. So our concern is you change the, change the plan to allow attached, you, if you go allow the additional height, which thankfully is being withdrawn, and these other modifications and waivers result in a situation where it'll be very difficult to protect the rest of the mountain because of the precedent that would be set today, without any hillside ordinance that the city has to govern it. So that is, that's where the concern comes from. And then we can't think of any other- And then we can't think of any other foothill around the entire valley that has anything but single-family detached along the foothills. This, to my knowledge, would be the first attached product adjacent to foothills in the entire valley. That all being said, we have been working with Mr. Curran and the applicant on a number of different variations. We have made it to the point of, we could live with the project with two conditions. It's limited to two-story, not three-story, two-story. If they can do it within thirty-five feet, great, but keep it two-story. We don't want to begin setting precedents of additional stories along the foothills. And we do still have concerns with the design. We think it's, we don't think it's appropriate. It has been a significant improvement. We would like to work further with the applicant on the design. If they can do those two things, I think we could move forward, and then maybe after this, modify the plan or do something to protect the rest of the foothills. But we would ask your consideration of those concerns, and at a minimum withhold the, hold the site development plan review so we continue working on the design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Thank you. All right, Mr. Curran, did you want to briefly address that, or should we open it up for public?
Well, I think very briefly. We understand that we'd probably be required to come back for another site review, plan review. So I think Mr. Rowe's second point about continuing to work with them on design, we've agreed to their color palette, we've agreed to rock face and various things that will make this actually be both by condition and by our owner's design, or I should say plans, that this is going to be a very upscale, high-priced kind of unit that's going to have some unique views out across the valley. Even with the Focus buildings immediately in front of us, they separate us from the existing residences, but there'll be a view more towards the south that will be quite extraordinary. So, I mean, it's our plan to make these very attractive, very high-end type projects. On the first of his points, though, about the three stories, with all respect, we have shaked and, we've tried to shake and bake this project so many times and so many ways, trying to find a way to get something to work where everybody would agree, and we wouldn't have to stand in front of the council and ask you to make a decision. And I think I've become convinced from my client and his architect that it just cannot happen at two stories. The constraints on the property are just too severe. I should tell you that there are other projects that have been approved in Lone Mountain at three stories, so we're not breaking ground on that. We're consistent with what's happened in the past.
Thank you. All right, any questions of Mr. Curran at this time from the council? Any questions at this time, Mr. Rowe at this time of the council? Folks, it's a public hearing. If anyone would like to be heard, be more than happy to hear from you. All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing then. And Councilman Brown, your pleasure.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, Mr. Curran, you mentioned that they're high-end. Have they projected the costs of the units? And I may have asked them in one of our meetings, but...
Mr. Mayor, Council, Keith Robertson, 2595 South Cimarron, project manager for Caballo Deora Estates. To answer your question, the cost, Councilman Brown, is that for the cost to build or the sale cost?
Sale.
Sale cost, we're figuring would be in about the $350 per square foot range.
And the units are?
Twenty-four hundred and fifty square feet with two-car garage, so in around the eight-hundred, excluding special amenities that the individual owners would want.
I appreciate that. And if we took this, even on three acres, if we took a three-acre parcel, and this came in as a townhouse application at eight-hundred thousand with a thirty-five-foot restriction, I think it would be embraced. It's that kind of quality. Because of its location, we've run into all these other issues. And the first issue that, again, created some of the conflict, is the fact that we've been told in the past that when someone purchases a property, they purchase what they see. And someone looks at forty percent of this property as a mountain, and they have to decide, is it developable? Do you do some things? And from the city's standpoint, we've been counseled that that's a buyer beware situation. You know what you're getting. And our land use evaluation should not be contingent upon a hardship. And that's been discussed, and I'm not sure as far as consistency or precedent in the past, but that's certainly an issue. And you balance that against where I think our staff is going, especially in this particular area. We would like to preserve what you see there as best we can. We, and Margot, correct me, because I may be speaking beyond what you've briefed me on, we don't want to start blasting this mountainside. And I certainly would support the non-blasting approach to a lot of the western facade that we have in the city. And in doing so, in protecting the natural contour, we're then allowing them to take that five-acre density of six units per acre, thirty units total, and blending it onto a developable portion of the parcel. From a policy standpoint, that's up for debate. What do we do? Protect or allow for the blending? In this case, certainly the thirty units, again, well within the five-acre gross parcel, but not what we typically see on the development. And that was one of the first issues that raised the conflict. The second one is the height. And this is one that, as was mentioned, in Lone Mountain West, there are currently two projects, single-family detached, that are within the thirty-five-foot height restriction, but have three stories or three levels, semantics aside. So they're in the plan. This one is an attached product, which we have not seen in the plan. But again, one of my emotions will be, to keep that thirty-five height restriction in place, the debate then becomes, do we get inside the shell of thirty-five feet and start dictating? From a design standpoint, do you do three levels, or do you limit it to two? Our code is ambiguous on that, especially in the Lone Mountain. We make references to two- and three-story, and yet height is the ultimate, the limit that we talk about. That's the second issue that had raised some of the conflict. And again, this is why I bring it up to the council, because I don't have the answers. I'm certainly seeking input, advice, counsel, if someone has experience or strong opinions either way. Speaking on Focus Commercial, and in particular John Ritter. Mr. Ritter is the one that assembled the majority of lands in now Cliff Shadows, what is referred to as Lone Mountain West master plan community. And he has been one, as long as I've dealt with his company, that has supported good development. And I appreciate Mr. Rowe coming forth and saying that, because Mr. Ritter has been supportive of ninety-nine percent of the activity out here, and likes to see that quality development continue. So I, I'm not so much concerned that they're up raising these issues. I think it's appropriate, not only that it's their neighbor, but it's Mr. Ritter's master Through great dialogue, and I appreciate both the applicant and Mr. Rowe getting together over the last ninety days, and bridging, certainly with some support from our office, bridging what was a wide gap in agreement to where we are today, and it's pretty close. It's pretty close as far as, especially if the height goes away, we're left with, I think, two key issues. One is the definition of that shell, what happens within the thirty-five feet. And I am not going to tell you what to do. It's going to be redesigned. But I think, in talking to staff, there are ways, especially on the eastern facade, which is what not only Focus will see, but what everybody will see when they can come into Cliff Shadows, what we present as that first impression. I think the concern is if it's thirty-five feet upgrade and three distinct levels. But you have talked about digging down into the garage or living space with patios and landscaping and block walls, whatever the case may be. So I'm going to leave that up to the ultimate design, but I think you know that issue is well-defined on where we want to get as close to possible. The second one, and to me may be the most important, and this picture on the screen, if everybody has it, if you backed off a quarter of a mile, you would be on the Cheyenne interchange, and driving into Cliff Shadows, this is what you'll see. And that's, that is, I think, is as important as any other issue discussed today, is that first impression. And that's going to be done by your design with colors, the materials that are used, I don't know what we call recess.
The indulation, the recessing of the buildings. And as your office, we agree that we want to blend the color of the product to match with the hillside, so that it almost doesn't stand out. It blends, and that's the intent of what we're going to do.
And that's what we're looking for. I know the staff report mentioned Italian Renaissance, Mission, or Southwest, and I don't know if we've been to architectural school, and I wouldn't know the three of them. So again, I think the intent here is well-understood.
Yes.
And the final point I'll make is, the option to go in with a single-family detached product?
Yes.
In some ways, would be more of an impact to that picture we're looking right now, even if we cut into the hill and put our traditional homes and tried to get as close to that same density. I think visually, it would have a far greater impact than what's being proposed with the townhomes.
Negative impact. We believe the same. It'd be more of a negative impact, and we did that at one point in our iterations.
And it's in the staff report, one of the layouts. And I compliment Margot and her staff, because this application is out front of the hillside ordinance, and I certainly support their direction as far as keeping the integrity of the mountains the way they are, and trying to get that quality development.
And we also want to thank Margot and the staff, because we've worked closely with them, with Gary Leopold, who's no longer with them, and with Doug, and with Margot, and they've been great.
That's where we're heading. On this particular, I'm willing to be supporting it, because by denying the height variance, it's going to force the applicant to go back and take a look at the redesign and the footprint, which we've asked to bring back as a public hearing before this council. So there's still the window to try to bridge that final little gap.
We can do that. We're comfortable that we can meet that.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one other thing that perhaps isn't relevant today? Because if the site design on today's application is not considered today, one of the conditions of approval on that was that we dedicate to the city the remaining part of the property that's outside our construction footprint, and we've agreed to do that. So that will give you the assurance that that mountainside is going to stay as it is now.
And that was under the rezoning?
I think that was on the site development plan, it was item number four.
I was going to raise that. I don't want to have that deeded back to the city, because does that not put the liability on us?
Yeah, it was brought up.
Liability for what? Anything that occurs on the property would be our liability, correct? Yes.
And this, there's a trail system up there, believe it or not, there are, people supposedly use the trail up there. And part of the condition reads, limiting future development of any phases, which I concur with. I probably wouldn't want the city to incur that three acres. Not only liability, but Mr. Hogness would go crazy if we asked his guys to go sixty feet up a mountain to take care of litter. I'm not sure.
Are you sure we weren't there?
No, we weren't there yesterday.
Mayor and Councilman, that is condition number four on the site development plan review.
Okay. So we'll revisit that when it comes back. But if the council members have any comments or questions, if not, I'm ready to move forward, Your Honor.
Very good. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to strongly support what Councilman Brown has stated here. It's a very difficult situation, and maintaining that sensitivity to keeping the mountains' integrity is very important. I think many citizens are watching what's going to happen up there, and you'll be with them, and sometimes they'll make remarks about, oh, nobody's going to care when we get to that point. I think it's showing we're caring. I think the Focus group has showed that it's cared, and the way it's handled all of that area also. So I strongly support what the council is saying.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. On Agenda Item 101A, I would move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
All right, let's vote. Motion carries.
On Agenda Item 101B, I'd move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
All right, let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Agenda Item 101C, I'd move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
All right, please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And as a side comment, although it didn't really come out in some of the overheads, the space between these, the front townhomes and the back townhomes, it was a created plaza, which our fire department initially approved, but then came back and asked that they have access underneath, which added to some of the issues with raising the height of the facility. So that was...
Yeah, we raised an additional four-point-five feet at their request after the third meeting. The first two, it was identified that they would no longer, or would not want to drive their vehicles underneath, but then decided, in case of a fire, they would, even though, as identified earlier, we're going to sprinkle everyone in the buildings.
You are sprinkling all the buildings?
Correct.
That's wonderful.
Yes, and so we had to increase the height by the four-and-a-half feet, which caused a little bit of additional changes to our plan.
That's great.
It is. It's a great amenity that didn't really show up on the photos. Agenda Item Number 101D, Margot, would the recommendation be to strike or to deny?
Mayor and Councilman Brown, I believe Mr. Curran indicated they were withdrawing that.
Okay. Then I would accept on 101D, the applicant's withdrawal.
That's without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item Number 101E, I'd move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Please vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues. On Agenda Item 101F, my motion would be to table.
All right, let's vote on that, please.
And certainly with that motion, encourage the applicant to continue to work with Focus and the neighbors and our office.
Very good.
We, Mr. Councilman, Your Honor, we intend to proceed as expeditiously as possible. This isn't just to get an approval. They have every intention going forward immediately. So we'll be working with staff and with Focus right away.
All right, very good. All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman, I think we were there yesterday. All right, Item 102, Madam Clark, please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, Centennial Hills Architectural Review Committee, and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Okay? Now we come to citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please step right up here and give us your name, and we'll have the three-minute timer on it. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. I saved this for citizens' participation. I wish to express, on behalf of my family, to all of my friends here at the city, and this community, and to all of the lives whom my mother and father touched throughout their years here in Nevada, my sincere appreciation for your heartfelt thoughts. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman and Council. What I'm here today for, because a lot of people know, I know that a lot of people around town, because of the situation I'm in, want me out of this city. But it doesn't matter what city I'm in, they have to remove my name off of this program. I cannot accept the bribes or payouts. Someone I do know have been up in there on Ellis, accepting bribes or payouts on my behalf. They have not talked to me, but what I'm told is people have been giving things to try to bribe and pay me. They tell, all she got to do is go back to Shreveport, she got a home, a car, a job waiting on her. on her. The answer is no, thank you. They have done too much evil toward me and my family. I don't feel safe living among these people, whether it's here or down there, or anywhere. They have to remove my name. It's got to be clear to these people that's out on me. I cannot accept their bribes or payout. I have to be removed from their program, and every ounce of truth has to be given to the CIA. I'm supposed to be reporting in as an agent, an independent agent. I'm not a part of what blacks or whites or foreign people are doing with this racket they got going in this country where they lying, stealing, and cheating. And I do know they lying, stealing, and cheating, and I'm not, I'm not for it. I mean, they wasted my time and theirs. God bless you. I got a gift for you. I got you a T-shirt. It's out there. I forgot to get it out of my other bag. Like this. That's what I was doing.
Total reward, three million on the house.
They said if you came wrong with the big dollars, they'll on the porch. I've been up at Menderley and man running with the big dollars.
Hey, well, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you in advance.
I'll get you a T-shirt.
I can't wait. All right. I'll share it with everybody on the council. Okay?
Afternoon, everybody. Mayor, councilmen, everyone else, viewers. My name is Jerry M. Neal. I came today to address an issue that we're having in Marvamana Public Housing. The issue is funding. Now, I know you guys probably, this may be a little far-fetched, but again, I think that you may be able to help us with this problem. I'm representing a lady who has a track team in Marvamana. The name of the, well, we won't go into that, because she's here today, but I thought I would put this forward to you, because she's not familiar with what you probably are able to do. So, here's some pictures of the kids that she is, have on her track team, and if there's anything else that you need from her, I'm more than willing to try to help her, and I would appreciate it if you could give her some type of contact to deal with you all. That's all I have to say, and I hope you consider it, and thank you very much.
Okay, we can't take any action today, Mr. Neal.
I understand.
Certainly...
Is it okay if she speak?
Oh, absolutely.
And can I contact, how will I go about contacting?
I would say you want to, you want to have her call Leisure Services.
Leisure Services?
Yes.
And anyone here that can?
I'm sure that either of these gentlemen will be able to give you the number to contact over there. Who are the, who are the young ladies?
The lady right here, Miss Deborah. Come forward, please.
Why don't the ladies come forward? Can I ask a question, please?
Certainly.
Maybe she can answer this. The track team that she has, is this a nonprofit organization?
We don't, she don't have a 501(c)(3) yet, but I'm hoping that she could come under the Marvamana Resident Council. I am the president of the resident council, and I'm hoping there's some way that she can come under that. No, we don't have a 501(c)(3) yet. I hope you can see past that, until she can get...
When you're dealing with federal funds, you can't see past that. What would need to happen is, if in fact she does qualify that she can go under the housing authority, then she would be eligible to apply for CDVG funding, so we could have someone from Neighborhood Services come down and speak with the young lady, and talk with her, and give us some directions from there, but when you're dealing with federal funding, no, you have to be a 501(c)(3).
Well, all of your help would be appreciated, Mr. Weekly, and anyone else that's willing to try to help us out with this problem.
Yeah, why don't you speak to somebody from Neighborhood Services, and I, instead of Leisure Services, and I think that Mr. Sanchez will be able to get somebody to speak to you today.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. And who are the young ladies that are with you? We always like to have our youth come forward and identify themselves. Come on up. See yourself on TV.
Hello.
Your name and, tell who you are.
My name is Nefertiti.
Where do you go to school, Nefertiti?
Andre Agassi.
Okay, good for you. A young man, where do you go to school?
With the P. Williams.
And what's your name?
Answal.
Good. Did you like the council meeting here?
Yeah.
Good. We're always happy to have you. Anytime you want to come down, you're welcome here.
Okay.
Okay, to both you and the young lady, all right? All right, thanks for coming up. That's okay, I understand. Okay, you're all, you're fine. You're just fine. Okay, and you'll be able to talk to the folks when they get down here. Good. All right, thanks for coming here. No, I think she'll probably...
She's fine?
Yes. I think it's probably best that she speaks to Neighborhood Services and sees whether it's feasible or not, and then we'd be happy to hear from her afterwards.
We'll have somebody come down and see you, okay?
Yeah, very good. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Ken Wolfson from Rainbow Studios LLC, 6440 Sky Point Drive. Just wanted to apologize for missing this afternoon, and I wanted to thank you very much for your support for the Strand project, and I wanted to submit this rendering to public record. Can I turn around?
Okay.
And we just really appreciate your support. We're getting ready to break ground on the avenue in about three weeks. We got a permit today.
I wish you had been here, because I had something all lined up for you, but...
I'm sure you did.
I really did, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. We can't take any action. We could just receive what you're doing here.
Of course. This was, thank you for your support.
Thanks, Ken. Project...
I know we already approved it, I understand, but I was lucky to speak to you, though. Okay.
Good luck to all these people who are asking for something. My name is Johnny Ventura. I'm with the Clark County Chronicle. Martin overhead, please. I'm still looking for funding for the Clark County Chronicle, and, but today, that's secondary. I want to complain and gripe about, well, I've been gripped about a few times, the numbers on the buildings, street addresses. We're still having problems. Now, we're getting so many new people in every week, and they're looking for numbers, and the car just drove me off the road about twenty minutes, half an hour ago, looking for a number. He apologized, because I put my brakes on real fast, blew out his window. He said, I'm sorry, sir, I was looking for 1525. I said, well, anyway, these things happen. Now, if necessary, the city engineering department, you remember the last time I was here, I showed you a copy of the city engineers' report that you should have numbers on the buildings, and nothing's been done. So, you know, I want to give Doug Selby a copy of my resume, and apply for the job. Very simple, but if you need someone to see it through, I'm applying for the job. Who do I give my resume to?
Well, you can give it to Mr. Houchens, and he'll give it to Ms. Ennis, and...
Mr. Houchens? Fine, I give it to Mr. Houchens, and this is going to be, it's not, it's not like I'm looking for a job with this city, although I wouldn't mind one, but the idea is, you can't take any, any, any action now. But we need it. We need it, gentlemen, lady, please. Thank you very much. God bless, have a beautiful day, and continue the good work you're doing.
Thank you. Anybody? Anybody else like to speak today? All right, seeing that, we'll adjourn, and thank you very much.